All right, here we go, folks. We've got a green light and we've got all of our awardees and families and friends seated in the back. It's going to be an exciting part of the evening, so let's get this meeting going. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Edina City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. Our new digital clock says it's 7:02 PM. And as Director Bennerott said, we are doing these meetings in a hybrid fashion, and some folks may be watching on cable TV or on youtube.com/Edinatv. They're going to be able to participate remotely here with respect to community comment. We don't have any public hearings this evening, and so they'll have one opportunity to participate. And we'll first visit with folks from our community that are here this evening that have concerns they want to comment on. And then, so having provided that information, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask our Clerk Sharon Allison to call the roll.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Rissler?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. We have a form of meeting agenda that's been published in advance of the meeting, so people had an opportunity to know in our community what's the City Council working on on March 18th. And the council has seen it as well, of course. Is there anyone that wishes to modify the meeting agenda in a form or fashion from a staff or a council standpoint? Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved. A second?
Where Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the adoption of the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adopting the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. The meeting agenda is adopted in its published form. And now we'll go to community comment, which comes up rather quickly here. I'm going to have that number go up on the screen once again for people that might be calling in, so they can see that and write those numbers down. But I think next we will go to a community comment from folks that are here in the audience that are wishing to speak to the council on a matter of concern to them.
My name is Ralph Zickert. I live at 4311 Cornelia Circle. First, a shout out to John Carlson. John is an Edina resident, and during community comment, he asked a question about the use of tax increment financing, referred to as Edina's Spark Fund. John's question prompted this response by Manager Neil. What is shocking about Neil's reply is that it reads like the Minnesota State Statute. Yes, you heard me correctly. Neil's reply reads exactly like the Minnesota State Statute. Unfortunately, his reply is the opposite of what he and staff have previously told the council over and over and over again for the last two years. Neil and his staff have been harpies, pushing the mantra, "Use it or lose it." Use it or lose it. Use it or lose it. But that is not, not what the state statute says. The state statute says, "Use it or return it." Yes, use it or return it to the TIF district from where it came. In Edina's case, some $8 million of Spark funding came from Southdale II TIF district, a TIF district that continues to hold $11 million. Money's deemed too precious by city staff to return to the county, an action that would result in roughly 1/3 or $3.5 million flowing back to Edina as unrestricted funds, which in turn could be used to address Edina's $50 million backlog of deferred maintenance. But no, better to use the $11 million to jumpstart construction of the pedestrian tunnel under France, creating yet another structure to maintain. Unfortunately, relying on Neil's false narrative, much of the damage is already done. Council has scurried to throw millions of dollars at unvetted, ill-advised projects like the Innovation Lab and the $4.8 million gift of TIF to the developer of a still idle U.S. bank site. What a shame that each year, hundreds of thousands of dollars go to city staff and consultants like Ellers and Dorsey, only for residents like John to prompt the uncovering of this egregious misrepresentation of state statute. So thank you, John, for your question during community comment. My question tonight, and it's a question for the council, not Mr. Neil. When does untruthfulness result in consequences? And given the millions of dollars spent under false pretenses, I believe a robust response would be warranted in the same chambers in which the final vote of approval occurred. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zickert.
My name is Nora Davis, and I live at 6921 Southdale Road in the Lake Cornelia neighborhood. You may want to check out my backyard. This is a photo that I took from my house pointed toward the 4040 building. And I'm here tonight because of something that was said at last community comment. My South Cornelia neighbor indicated that the neighborhood didn't know anything about the fourth floor, and that statement was refuted by city staff. And I'm here to say tonight, our neighborhood was told again and again and again that this was going to be three stories with a setback to a fourth. Three stories, they kept saying, three stories, they kept saying. But one day, one of my alert neighbors is looking up, and there is construction on the fourth floor. She did contact the city. There was much investigation, and it was discovered that after the city council had approved this in 2021, the developer went to the planning department with changes, and those changes were completed and done. The unfortunate thing is, neighborhood didn't know anything about it, city council didn't know anything about it. So it was a very uncomfortable situation. And then it happened again. We were told, in fact, the whole city was told, that 4040 was going to be for Edina seniors who wanted to stay in Edina when they decided to retire or downsize. But when the legal papers were signed, there was no talk of seniors. There was talk of 55 aged people and actually in agreement with Hennepin County for six units for homeless people and six units for hard-to-house people. And as we all know, when the residents started coming, there were issues. There were disturbances, theft, warrant arrests, a lot of police calls. But the most frightening thing at all was that arson fire on the night of December 3rd. I cannot imagine how frightened those residents were. When fire trucks are there, there's pounding on the building, the fire alarms are going off, and there's smoke and water in the hallways. That never should have happened. That was way, way too frightening. It's become an issue for surrounding businesses and the neighborhood. Our Lake Cornelia and South Cornelia neighborhoods are pretty special places, and I kind of feel like they have a target on their back. We are dealing with increased crime, with noise, traffic, and then the trees that were taken down at 7200, that was absolutely painful. I think it's time that there is an impact committee set up that looks at each of these developments and talks about how these developments actually impact the neighborhoods.
Ms. Davis, I need to have you wrap up. I let you go way over your three minutes.
I know, and I confess I did. But again, we are a missing middle neighborhood, a very diverse neighborhood, but we seem to be under attack all the time, and I'm finding that frightening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you have anybody online? Director Bennerott? Nobody online? Okay. All right. Our usual practice is that comments that were made at the prior city council meeting by our concerned residents are addressed by the end of that week of that council meeting online on the city website, and then we follow up with a verbal report here from the city manager on some of those comments that were made. And at least one of the commenters tonight was the same, was a commenter, I think, two weeks ago, and somewhat the same topic. But Manager Neil, I'll turn it to you now to address some of those issues that were raised at the prior city council meeting by concerned residents.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had three questions at the March 4th meeting. First question was, how is the HRA budget shared with the public? The HRA is a separate advisory entity within our city government. The governing board of the HRA is the same as the governing board of the city council, and the city council appoints the governing board of the HRA. The HRA prepares a budget along a similar, not exactly the same, but a similar timeline and timeframe each year, and has to go through the same kind of development, or excuse me, HRA approval and council approvals before it becomes an official budget document. It includes sometimes a capital improvement plan as well as an operating budget for our HRA. And the HRA finances are reported up through our comprehensive financial audit every year, and they are included in that audit report. So you'll see that when that report comes back from our independent auditors back to the city council. Second question was, can Spark Funds be returned to the general fund and used for crime prevention and safety? The answer to that is no. The Spark is a program called Special Projects and Redevelopment Capital Fund, or SPARC is the acronym, S-P-A-R-C, developed by the Housing and Development Authority, and it was a way to try to bring some new dollars into, or some existing dollars into the economic development sphere in the community, and comes kind of out of that COVID pandemic timeframe. So we can't use those Spark Funds for the purposes of general fund expenditures on crime prevention and safety. And I will say at this time, our Spark Funds have been committed to specific projects already. If any Spark Funds are unspent by the end of 2025, they revert to the TIF fund where they originated. Final question was, recently, a developer removed trees that were to have been left on a property. Can the city implement stricter oversight measures to ensure this sort of thing does not happen again? When we permit a project or we do a capital project ourselves, we often have inspectors that are on those sites, but they're not on the site all the time, and it would not be financially feasible for us to have inspectors on projects, whether they're public or private, every minute of every day. It would just cost too much and be too difficult to staff. So there is an element of trust, and there is an element of, we verify certain key times and events and milestones in a project. But in terms of this particular item, you're going to hear a little bit more about that, actually, a lot more about that in this meeting sometime. So I'll leave it at that, and we'll talk about the actual details for that project later.
Okay. Thanks for that. Tonight, we heard Mr. Zickert talk about use it or lose it compared to use it or return it. It was maybe a loose sort of expression that our Economic Development Director used, use it or lose it on the Spark Funds. But, you know, I think we all knew what he meant, was that Edina had the opportunity to use these funds and deploy them before December 31 of 2025, or they would go back to the county.
Right.
So there wasn't any intention to mislead the public about, the way I interpreted it, as to what would happen with those funds that were unspent by December 31, 2025. Manager Neil, is that correct?
Well, they would go back to the TIF, not necessarily to the county. They could go back to the county if the council made that decision.
They'd go back to the district, yeah. But if the district is decertified, then they would go back to the county. Member Rissler?
When I came on board, it was very specific. There was a time crunch, and I think if I went back through meetings and presentations, it was consistent, it would go back to Hennepin County. And that was the message that I received early on. I've heard it probably between 30 and 50 times. And I remember most recently, staff saying, "Why can't Edina keep it?" And I think we even had a presentation from Ellers about the whole mechanics of TIF, and if it goes back to the county, you only get 1/3 of it. And I think, you know, that messaging was there. And I think if we went back through presentations, we would see very clearly that we were being told it would have to be returned to the county if we didn't spend it. So I'd like a little more reflection on this, you know, not necessarily tonight, but if that really was the case, why wasn't that corrected right away? It is frustrating. Thank you.
Sure, thanks for that. Yeah, Manager Neil, you might want to clear that up, because it might have been a representation that it was going back to the county, because the TIF district it would go back to was decertified or would be closed up, and it would have to go back by state law.
That's true.
I don't know that. It might have been a shortcut version of saying what would have happened from a process standpoint, but I don't know that. For Member Rissler, we can answer Member Rissler's question.
I think we can, when we try to answer TIF questions, it's important to, the language, obviously, is very important. It depends on whether that district has been decertified or not. If it's been decertified, then yes, that money goes back to Hennepin County and then is distributed back to the taxing bodies in a kind of a pro-rata form. We can bring more expertise to this question if you wish, and we will plan to do that at our next council meeting.
I'm not looking for, I'm looking for clarity. I want to know if we can get funds from TIF back to the county, and maybe it could be a portion of a decertified TIF district. Maybe we wouldn't have to close it out. But we do have $11 million sitting there, and to Mr. Zickert's point, that could be money that could be used to help address some of our deferred maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Pierce? Or member Agnew?
No, I think I'm good.
Member Agnew?
Thank you. I think for me, I feel like we have very good clarity around TIF districts, whether sort of currently in action or decertified. So I appreciate that distinction. I think for me, the open question is in relation to the Spark Funds, because we don't have that full traceability of which TIF district those would have come from. And I think that might help close the loop on, you know, let's say we had $1 million left in Spark. If that Spark would then go back to a TIF district, is that TIF district already decertified? And if so, it would go back to the county and be distributed in thirds?
That's how I understand it as well.
So just to close the loop on that, just to validate that it would be going to a decertified TIF district as opposed to one of the existing open TIF districts that we have?
Right. If it came from a TIF district that was later decertified, if it's not committed during the timeframe, then it would go back to the county. That's true.
And so just the clarification on, for $1 million left over in Sparks at the end of this year, would that be going back to a decertified TIF fund district or not?
I think I would like to talk to Bill Nuenendorf about that, to make sure I'm answering the right question with the right answer.
Because I think your instincts are right, Member Agnew, that the Spark Funds were an accumulation or aggregation of funds from different districts. And so what the status of those districts is, is a good question.
But in any case, those monies can't come back for the purpose that was requested, right? Crime, crime fighting or law enforcement kind of activities.
I was just adding, they're restricted for use if they do come back. Right? I guess the only thing I, and that's just my personal opinion, it's dangerous for us to pontificate about an issue like that without all the details. So I appreciate you, Manager Neil, saying this is how you're interpreting it, but you'd want to get back, so you can come back with the more specific answers. So I appreciate that.
While we're on this portion of the agenda, I think Director Teague, I'm looking at you, one of the questions that Resident Nora Davis raised, or the assertions that she made, was that on 4040 flats, that it should have been three stories and not four stories. That's the very issue we addressed at the last meeting. And I think it'd be worthwhile having you restate the answer you gave last time as to why, at the staff level, it was approved, that there was a change, and in fact, that was reviewed. Staff change was reviewed carefully by, I think, an independent consultant to see if it was or was not in compliance with the approved plan.
Yes, the city code allows staff to make certain changes after a final approval. There was, I don't recall the exact details, but the changes fell within that discretion that staff has. My recollection was, they were talking about adding an entire story, which wasn't true. It was always a four-story building. There was just some shifting around of parts of that fourth story that fell within that threshold for staff to be able to make that determination.
Member Jackson?
I seem to remember that it was a sound issue, that there was a patio, and they decided it would be better for the neighborhood to put the patio towards the commercial side.
That sounds right, yep.
All right. Very good. I think other things you can hold over and you can answer the end of this week online and then come back to the city council with some of those responses to some of the concerns of Member, or Mr. Rickert. And incidentally, we worked Saturday, all day Saturday, on budget issues, all of us as council, many staff. There were some citizens there, including Mr. Zickert. And one of the things we talked about in terms of revenue production was something that staff worked on, but it was also something that he had raised as an issue. And in fairness to Mr. Zickert, I'd say, thanks to that idea relative, from his perspective, relative to, if the county's recovering the costs of credit card fees, we should be thinking about that as well. So I know staff has thought about that, too. All right, let's go now to the consent agenda. And Member Rissler wanted to pull items 6.4 and 6.5, which deal with the pedestrian bridge that's going to be going over the crosstown, the replacement bridge. And with the exception, is there anyone else that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda, other than 6.4 and 6.5? Is there a motion to approve the balance of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of items 6.4 and 6.5?
So moved.
Second.
Member Agnew moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of all the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of 6.4 and 6.5. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Motion is approved. The items on the consent agenda are adopted and approved, except for 6.4 and 6.5, which are linked together. One is a request for additional services related to steel trusses and engineering, and then one for architectural services related to the bridge. And I'm going to turn now to Member Rissler to address what some of her concerns are here with respect to those two items. Member Rissler?
And it does kind of pertain to the budget and everything that's been on our minds for the past couple of days. And I am primarily concerned about cost and just wanting to be assured that, you know, what we are proposing and moving forward with staff is confident that we are going to be able to do with the money that has been provided by, through MINDOT funding, and we're not going to go over budget. And I know I did hear from a couple residents about that. So we're at 30%, and it looks like we need to up the expenditure on this, go from $88,000 to $128,000. And I'm wondering, do you anticipate seeing, I mean, are we going to be seeing another increase and another, maybe just kind of dig down on this a little bit?
Yep. So we're at about 30% design, and these expenditures are expected. These were in that $6 million budget, with the $3 million from MINDOT, like you mentioned, and $3 million from a legislative appropriation. So at this point in time, we are still trending to be within that $6 million budget.
You're pretty confident that we will be able to do that throughout the whole project?
It's too early to tell.
Too early to tell.
Are we going to put stairs on the facility? Are we going to have to, is MINDOT going to require some different things to attach the architectural features over the roadway? Right now, our estimates say yes, but we still have a long ways to go to get final design. And if anything impacts those budgets, we'll be back with the city council to have a conversation about that.
Okay. Thank you.
With respect to 6.4, which is a request for purchase for the Roslin Park pedestrian bridge, steel and truss and engineering services related, is there a motion to adopt item 6.4?
So moved. Second.
We got a motion by Member, Rissler second by a member, Jackson, to adopt item 6.4 on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adopting 6.4, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. 6.4 is adopted. 6.5 is a request for purchase for change order number one for the Roslin Park pedestrian bridge for architectural services. Is there a motion to adopt that request for purchase?
Moved. Second.
We got a motion, second, to approve the request for purchase for item 6.5 on the consent agenda related to architectural services for the Roslin Park pedestrian bridge. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of item 6.5 on the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Item 6.5 is adopted. Change order is approved. All right, that completes items on the consent agenda, and now we are on to this great gathering of folks we have. All started with some really nice recognitions on February 22nd. Unfortunately, I was out of town, and I think some of you may have attended that evening and had a wonderful time. It's the second time we've done this, recognizing Police Officer of the Year, Firefighter of the Year, and Public Safety Employee of the Year. And we're going to have, we've got families and friends, and we've got colleagues and fellow staff members from the Fire Department and the Police Department with us tonight. And first, we're going to turn to our Fire Chief, Andrew Slameter, recognized Dan Schlick as the 2024 Firefighter of the Year. And you're not going to have to worry about that name tag. We're going to cover, everybody here knows who you are. And everybody is greatly appreciative of the fact that you have been determined to be Firefighter of the Year. It's really quite a great honor. And so, Chief, I'll turn to you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We're here on a special night to recognize a number of public safety employees. So bear with Chief Milburn and I as we get through these and read the awards. So this year's Firefighter of the Year is Dan Schlick, who's standing here next to me. He's here with his family to recognize Dan tonight. Dan joined the Edina Fire Department in February 2019. From the start, he's been focused on the success of the Fire Department's operations as well as the readiness of his partners and equipment. Dan has worked continually to enhance Edina's operations through his dedication to training and education, an example of his work during the complete overhaul of the Fire Department's protocols. He partnered with other members and the medical director to rewrite our entire Fire Department protocol book. Dan utilizes knowledge of the best practices of medicine to ensure the citizens of Edina receive the top-level care when needed the most. The process will now be completely, will be completed annually to ensure the standard of care provided by our Edina paramedics remains exceptional. Dan introduced new technology to update the process for ordering medical supplies as well as evaluating our upcoming supply needs. Previously, the department used a paper list to document- Previously, the department used a paper list to document current and upcoming medical supply needs. The new system that Dan spearheaded, implemented, created an ordering model that anyone in the Fire Department can utilize. The process has become easier, allowing greater accountability and reduce waste. Dan is able to demonstrate his leadership with the EMS Committee, and active support of his peers, his organization, and his attention to detail. He described, he's described as a guy who catches all the stuff. With his ability to recognize little things that need to get done and following through to completion, Dan has a demonstration of passion for ensuring that other members of the Fire Department have everything that they need. He looks for opportunities for continued growth and progressive performance of his peers. He's worked to maintain relationships with outside agencies and personnel that support the Fire Department's mission of serving the community by protecting lives, property, and environment, and safe and efficient professional manager. Some of these agencies are the local hospital systems, other medical personnel, and the Edina Police Department. Dan values these relationships and understands the importance that they have in providing excellent service. He's been an essential member of the Edina Fire Department throughout his career and was a crucial linchpin during a year when Edina EMS needed consistency. Dan demonstrated stability and reliability, and displays his organizational excellence, clear communication, and a dedication to constant improvement for not just himself, but his partners and the Fire Department as a whole. Dan Schlick was presented the 2024 Firefighter of the Year Award, and he wished for nothing else than to say a few words to you tonight.
All right, Dan Schlick.
Of course, I like talking. I'm very humbled to give this award for my peers. I wasn't expecting it. I really just kind of do all this stuff to make sure that we're the best department, we're able to take care of everybody the best we can. So I'm glad that they can rely on me and all that stuff, but just another day, so. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, Chief Milburn. With the Police Department, I have the honor and the privilege to present to you tonight our Officer of the Year. The Crime Prevention Fund has presented an award, the Mike Sutari Officer of the Year Award, annually since 2011, to recognize exceptional officers deserving of special recognition. The award is named after Mike Sutari, who served as Police Chief from 1999 to 2009 during his 31-year tenure with the Edina Police Department. This award is presented annually, recognizing officers who have gone above and beyond the call of duty. The 15th recipient of the Officer of the Year Award is Sean Young. Sean joined the Edina Police Department in April 2011. During his time, this time at the Edina Police Department, Sean has spent that time in a variety of different positions, such as Field Training Officer, Reserve Coordinator, Cadet Mentor, Canine Officer, and most recently Retail Crimes Investigator. Sean is an informal leader in all these positions and exemplifies what is expected from a Edina Police Officer. Sean has been the coordinator of our reserve program for our 10 years, and during this time, he assisted in the development of dozens of reserve officers who are volunteers for our department. Sean coordinates the budget, training, equipment, and the use of reserves for special events and extra patrol presence. Sean has a high level of commitment to these individuals and respects their passion for bettering the Edina community through the work of their efforts. While many officers demonstrate a passion for their job, especially a specialty position, Sean has unwavering commitment to public safety and community engagement during his time as a Canine Handler. Sean spent eight years of his career as a Canine Handler with his Canine partner, Blitz. During that time, Sean Blitz responded to over 650 calls for service, consistently ensuring safety and well-being of our officers and community members. Sean brought his knowledge of Canine-related case law, as well as the dynamics of tactics and tracking suspects safely and efficiently to every call he responded to. Sean worked with a variety of officers from within the Edina, along with outside agencies, to track and locate suspects, narcotics, and firearms with ease. His commitment to the Canine program was also evident during the annual Canine Trials, where Sean and Blitz typically finished towards the top of the rankings and received top awards on multiple occasions. This success can only be attributed to the hours and training that Sean has conducted with Blitz alongside his devotion to the program. Currently, Sean has immersed himself in the Retail Crimes Investigator position. This position placed him in the Southdale Mall, responding to immediate calls for service from retailers and following up on past action complaints. Sean put in for this position, knowing that he would be one of the first in this role, and would set the pace for success for future officers. In 2024, Sean effectively managed a heavy caseload, arresting over 130 individuals, showcasing his continued dedication to addressing retail crime. Sean partnered with outside agencies to develop investigative leads, address targeted retail crime concerns, and make arrests. Sean also built strong and trusting relationships with many of the retailers inside Southdale Mall. His proactive approach has been instrumental in fostering cooperation and trust, which has proven vital in commanding retail crime. The relationship Sean has made will continue long past Sean's time in the position, and will allow for continued future success for any officer taking over as Retail Crimes Investigator moving forward. Officer Sean Young's professionalism, proactive work, and dedication to building meaningful connections within both law enforcement and business communities sets him apart as truly deserving of this distinguished award. Please join me in congratulating Officer Sean Young as a 2024 Mike Sutari Officer of the Year.
All right. Sean, Sean, any things?
Sean also wants to provide a speech.
Yeah.
Thank you. I had to prepare a very, very small speech. Thank you so much. I just want to say a few words. I'm extremely honored to receive this award. June of this year will be 20 years as a police officer for me, so that's, this award means a lot to me. Chief, City Council, Mayor, thank you for having us tonight to be recognized. I want to thank the Crime Fund for all the opportunities you provide our department. Being a Canine Handler was always a dream of mine, and without the Crime Fund, I would not have been able to have Canine Blitz as my partner for almost nine years. Canine will always be the highlight of my career, and I'm thankful for the opportunity. Thank you to my three wonderful children who are here tonight. They had to put up with the crazy nights, crazy hours over the years, and they always supported me. To my parents, my mom who's watching in South Dakota, hello. And last, I just want to thank my partners at work who truly make this job enjoyable and worth coming to work every day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, last, the last you're going to hear from me tonight. The Public Safety Employee of the Year Award is presented annually to a non-sworn employee of the Police or Fire Department who has exemplified organizational values, ideals, and dedication to serving the citizens of Edina. Tonight, I have Andrew LaVenture, a resident of Edina, and his family's here in the back, also here to recognize him. Andrew LaVenture joined the Edina Fire Department in August 2012 as a volunteer firefighter, where he served until April 2021. In May 2021, he became the Communications Unit Leader. During his time in this position, Andrew has worked to improve the citywide messaging during specific emergencies, and he's further prepared members of both Fire and Police Department in emergency management to reduce the impact of the disasters of the citizens in Edina. The Edina Dispatch Center, which provides service to police and fire, previously held capabilities for alerting staff members and citizens for emergencies and safety messaging, which is known as RAVE or SMART 911. Andrew recognized that this technology has not, was not being used to its full potential, and took it upon himself to research more about the program and its capabilities. Andrew discovered a large area of untapped potential that would benefit staff and residents. Andrew worked with the Communications Department, along with representatives from Police, Fire, Dispatch, to create, to create a staff training program, as well as monthly repetitions, to ensure police and fire staff are comfortable using the technology. Taking it one step further, Andrew coordinated a statewide RAVE SMART 911 user group, a group that was also convened today for the second, the second training of this group. That group shared and used your knowledge of the system for improvements for communities all throughout Minnesota. Edina has since been able to more effectively notify residents to emergencies impacting their neighborhoods. And all of that was made possible with the attention to detail for this project, and that was all showcased by Andrew. Emergency management is an underutilized skill that is both low in frequency and high in risk. Andrew recognized areas of improvement within our emergency management systems for the city and prepared a training environment in December of last year that allowed members from every department and division to be present. The training allowed attendees to learn in a trusting and professional environment, while challenging each person to identify gaps that could create challenges during a real-world event. Andrew is described as someone who exemplifies good customer service, always being polite and professional to everyone he interacts with. He is quick to respond to requests for assistance and provides regular process updates. He treats everyone with respect, regardless of the stress he encounters in his work as a pilot and a Communications Unit Leader within the city of Edina. Andrew's commitment to the advancement of communication through technology, his professionalism and dedication to improving all members of the Police and Fire Departments in emergency management preparedness demonstrate why he is a Public Safety Employee of the Year in 2024.
All right, Andrew.
For the record, I was told no speeches, but, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for taking the time to recognize all of us tonight. We truly appreciate it. A few weeks ago at the banquet, I was taken aback, and I wasn't expecting it, and there was a little shell shock, and I left out one key thing in my speech when I went up to the podium, and it was a thank you to my wife and my family for all they do to support me so I can do this work. And so now it's on camera, it's on YouTube forever. We recognize them, but I truly love coming to work at the city of Edina and making things better every single day. So thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Andrew. So I think we're going to, we're going to do some photos now, and I think we should have the whole council come down with the three award winners and the chiefs. And then, is that Denny back there?
Oh. It looks like Denny, but it's all right.
Let's all go down here and have a look.
Yeah, well, I think we have a council.
We're going to do one of each group.
We're going to do one, we're going to get Dan to start the show.
All right, can you come in just a tiny bit? Okay, there we go. Very tall, James Pierce.
Say, smile. Smile.
All right, next.
Here's the start of the show.
All right, great job, Andrew. That's, that's, there we go. All three of you.
You guys hop in the center with Sean.
Like, really sideways, skinny, everybody in. Okay, there we go.
Sure.
All right. You're in.
Take a look.
See, it's like, yeah.
See, it's like, yeah.
See, it's like, yeah.
See, it's like, yeah.
Light up on, it's the best.
All right, sideways, skinny, sideways, skinny.
All right.
All the kids are doing great.
16, 17.
All right, thank you.
James in all my arms, there we go.
All right.
Congratulations.
All right, everybody sideways, skinny, here we go.
Next on the agenda, we've got our Sustainability Manager, Marissa Bear, with us this evening, and she has a really comprehensive report on the, on the work we've been doing around greenhouse gas reduction and trying to reduce energy usage. And we're making progress. We're, it's not easy, but we've got some really wonderful information, and I think some things to be really proud of. And so thanks for guiding this department and guiding the city on these areas that are so important to all, every one of us on the council and our entire community that has told the City Council, you know, this is an important issue for us, this whole environmental issue, so.
Great, well, yeah, thank you, Mayor, thank you, councilmembers, again. My name is Marissa Bear, I'm the Sustainability Manager here in Edina, and I'm going to be doing the annual Sustainability Updates. I'll walk through some information related to implementation of our Climate Action Plan, as well as an update to our greenhouse gas emissions goals and progress towards that Climate Action Plan goal that we have. So just as a reminder, the Climate Action Plan was adopted in 2021 and sets a vision for Edina to help all those who live and work in our community imagine and achieve a future where Earth and all who live on it thrive. To achieve this, there were eight sectors identified in the Climate Action Plan across 36 strategies, 218 actions, and nine years to achieve and implement. That goes out to 2030. Those eight sectors, so we have transportation, land use, buildings and energy, waste management, water, wastewater, local food and agriculture, green space and trees, climate health and safety, and climate economy. So across all these sectors, we have different strategies and actions that we're working to implement. For context, we see that top row, those are the sectors where we're able to have measurable, trackable greenhouse gas emission reductions. This is what the basis of how we set our goal and where we track our progress. The bottom row, those are tangential to our climate reduction. They definitely help towards greenhouse gas emission reductions, but much harder to kind of measure and quantify, like that top row. So we really see implementation here benefiting not only our overall community, but climate resilience and climate equity as we continue this work. So our Climate Action Plan goal is to reduce community-wide greenhouse gas emissions 45% by 2030 and achieve net zero emissions by 2050. Based on our most recent 2023 greenhouse gas inventory, we've achieved a 17% reduction in our greenhouse gas emissions. So from 2019 to 2023, we've reduced our emissions 17%. This is community-wide across all sectors. The graph on the screen represents a linear reduction in our progress towards goals. So the wedges are representing those different sectors, buildings, transportation, waste, and water. Those are the greenhouse gas emissions. And then the gold diamonds represent those actual emissions, what have we actually achieved in terms of emissions reductions. And so you can see in 2023, there's that 17% reduction from 2021 to 2023, not as drastic of a reduction from our last inventory, but still a reduction from baseline. And then what we're working towards is that 2030 goal, so a 45% reduction. So what this graph is helping to visualize is just what is the quantified or visual representation of the emissions that need to be reduced. This graph shows that in a little bit more detail, so a lot of information on the screen across those four sectors where we're measuring our greenhouse gas emissions. The numbers on the screen represent the baseline, so that's where we started in 2019. The 2023 value- So, the, the wedges are representing those different sectors, buildings, transportation, waste and water, those are the greenhouse gas emissions. And then the gold diamonds represent those actual emissions, what have we actually achieved in terms of emissions reductions. And so, you can see in 2023, there's that 17% reduction from 2021 to 2023, not as drastic of a reduction from our last inventory, but still a reduction from baseline. And then what we're working towards is that 2030 goal, so our 45% reduction. So, what this graph is helping to visualize is just what is the quantified or visual representation of the emissions that need to be reduced. This graph shows that in a little bit more detail, so a lot of information on the screen across those four sectors where we're measuring our greenhouse gas emissions. The numbers on the screen represent the baseline, so that's where we started in 2019, the 2023 value, so based on our inventory where we are at. And then looking out ahead to 2030, that cap goal. The far right column kind of represents the idea of are we on track? Yes, no, sort of, where we would expect to be in 2023 based on that linear reduction. And so, you can see across, we have some positive, some negative and some neutral. And same information, but to update a little bit, I like to use kind of drivers of change, what is contributing towards that on-track status. So, starting at the top for water and wastewater, we do see a reduction in those greenhouse gas emissions. That's primarily driven through electricity used for water distribution and wastewater collection. And so, we've seen the emissions related to that electricity reduced. We are not quite exactly where we thought our target would be, but we're not far off. So, we kind of see that as on-track, medium status. For solid waste, our emissions are above where we would have expected to be and where we wanted to be in terms of achieving our goal. The reason for that is because we've had a decreased organics and recycling participation across our community as well as an increase in waste-to-energy diversion waste. So, that's a higher admittance in greenhouse gas where trash is sent to the HERC, Hennepin County Energy Recovery Center, the emissions intensity of that waste diversion is higher than what we would expect and, and that's where we want to send to organics and recycling. Buildings and energy, this is our, our green checkmark, we've seen very great progress here. This is primarily because of Excel Energy's investment in grid decarbonization, meaning they are putting more carbon-free generation on the grid and we benefit as a community for that. And you can see the reduction there, that annual target is that dash line where we would want to be and the solid line is, is much lower than where we expected. So, the buildings and energy sector is, is a green check for us and something where we've been able to make progress. Transportation is another one of those sectors where we're not on track where we expected to be. So, you can see the, the solid line there is above the annual target. The reason for this is we've had an increase in the vehicle miles traveled, so car trips that are happening in our community that are emitting carbon as well as low EV adoption and low public transit use. So, those are the drivers of change across all these different sectors and kind of where we're on track as we meet our goal. Even though we have an overall 17% reduction, the, the buildings and energy sector is really driving that and making up for those solid waste and transportation sectors where we didn't quite hit our mark. There's was community-wide emissions, the city of Edina is part of that community-wide inventory, but do want to pull it out just to be able to speak to our leadership in our community, the investments that we're making in our facilities. And so, the chart on the screen represents the city of Edina municipal operations, so our buildings, our fleet and across those different sectors. And we're able to control this a little bit better than maybe we think for community-wide emissions. We're really excited to share that we've had a 26% reduction in our emissions for our municipal operations. Similar to the, the previous slide to our community-wide emissions, this is primarily driven by the building energy sector. We've seen a 43% reduction in our electricity emissions. Grid decarbonization is a huge piece of that. Utility scale decarbonization is really helpful for our local climate goals, but we've also been making a lot of positive investments in efficiency projects in our facilities as well as renewable energy subscription programs to help decarbonize our buildings. The other positive story is just around solid waste and the decreased estimated waste generation and then also waste diversion to organics and recycling. So, moving away from that more carbon intense waste diversion. So, as we think about achieving our climate action plan goals, we kind of like to frame it across three different approaches. So, we talk about activation, we host events in our community, workshops for residents and businesses, and then also provide incentives as well to motivate action. We want to increase awareness of our climate action plan, of our goals, of actions that folks can take. So, we work on different communications, different outreach in our community and then also accountability, so reporting like tonight, that biennial greenhouse gas inventory I had shared and then as well as the online dashboard through Invisia where we report action status on a quarterly basis for all the actions within the climate action plan. A big piece of our implementation of what funds a lot of this work is the Conservation and Sustainability Fund, also known as the CAS fund. And so, this is primarily funded through utility franchise fee revenue. That balance does roll over year to year. So, we estimate at the beginning of 2024 was an estimate about 1.79 million starting balance. And in 2024, we spent about 1.8 million dollars with 73, 73% of those expenses being spent on city vehicle electrification, facility upgrades around efficiency improvements, renewable energy investments and then facility studies. So, evaluating opportunities for us to continue to invest in our vehicles as well as our So, a lot was accomplished last year, I'm not gonna read everything on this slide, but just kind of want the, the takeaway to be that a lot has been done across a lot of different ways within our climate action plan. I'm gonna highlight a few of the bolded items on the screen. So, the first around community engagement, we hosted Electrify Everything program workshops, we're working with residents to electrify their homes, so to install air source heat pumps, look at heat pump water heaters, induction stoves to help reduce their home's carbon footprint. In terms of community investment, we hosted Community Climate Action Fund. And last year, we added Eat Bike as an eligible project, which was very popular in our community. So, a way to incentivize folks to consider different ways to move and travel throughout our community. For grant funding, we established a process for elective pay for us to be able to essentially file taxes and claim clean energy tax credits. So, this is a new opportunity for us ongoing to be able to, through this investment that we make on efficiency, electric vehicles, renewable energy, we're able to generate new revenue sources to bring in and continue to do that work. So, being able to establish that process was a huge win. We completed a solar suitability analysis, so looking at all city facilities that we own, what is the suitability to install solar? Is it a good candidate? What do we think the estimated cost might be? We are now able to use that data moving forward, looking at our capital improvement plan as well as grant applications to say we know this site is a great candidate, we have the data, we have the study to be able to verify that. Last year, we kicked off the implementation of the carryout bake fee ordinance, which requires most merchants and businesses to charge five cents for carryout bakes. That launched on July 1st of 2024, so a lot of outreach and engagement related to that last year. And then the other thing I want to highlight is elevating our voice. We participated in a Public Utilities Commission comment periods for key issues related to Edina to be able to say this issue is important to us. We filed comments related to air source heat pump rebates, vegetation management and then also communications around power outages. So, that's information that we can, we file as a community to Edina as part of that regulatory process, working with other communities and other agencies to share that. So, elevating issues that are important to our community as it relates to sustainability and climate action. So, I'm gonna walk through just kind of some of those key pieces, impact by the numbers. So, the first is funding. We secured about 1.9 million dollars in grant funding last year for sustainability and climate action plan projects. And you can see on the screen here, the different projects. Bredesen Park Restoration, looking at removing invasive species, removing public ash trees on public property, received a grant to do that work. Received a grant to kick off in a Safe and Equitable Mobility Action Plan, so a planning process to be able to bring together planning efforts. We filed those clean energy tax credits for electric vehicles that we purchased. And then the largest project that we secured funding for is bio fleet conversion. So, looking at our heavy-duty fleet, approximately 10 snow plow slash dump trucks, converting that to biodiesel and reducing that carbon footprint. The italicized text on the screen represents that federal funding. I know there's been a lot of questions around, is the funding secured, are we gonna get it? We have executed grant agreements for all of our federal funding sources, so we feel very confident that that funding will come forward and we can move forward with these In terms of programs, so our Community Climate Action Fund is a program where we provide cost share incentives for residents, businesses, multifamily buildings in our community to do efficiency, renewable energy and other projects. 90 projects were funded last year with $98,000 allocated for that. That $98,000 investment leveraged about $1 million in private investment in our community. So, a huge impact in terms of the city investment of what we've seen invested back in our community through private dollars. We also provide energy attic cost share, so we discount or fully cover the cost to co-pay for a business or a resident has to pay for an assessment that looks at their building in terms of efficiency, renewable energy. Last year, we covered the cost for 200 residential assessments and 31 business assessments in our community. So, those are individuals that now have reports where they can move forward on projects that they might want to take in terms of improving efficiency within their building. Impact by our capital investments, so City Hall, the building we are in, has been going under a lot of energy management upgrades. The picture on the screen shows the new solar system that's been installed on the facility here. Once the projects are fully commissioned, we estimate about $3 million, or sorry, $3 million KBTU a year in energy savings in terms of operational efficiencies through building automation, lighting upgrades, HVAC improvements. And then with that new solar system, about 540,000 KBTU a year generated onsite with that new solar system. So, diverting our energy consumption from the grid to that solar system, further reducing energy bills and then also just further solidifying the resilience and carbon footprint of this building. We also accomplished a lot of fleet vehicle conversions, we purchased 11 electric vehicles and two hybrid vehicles last year, so that's replacing traditional combustion engine vehicles with an electrified or hybrid vehicle to further achieve our transportation reduction goals within our own city fleet. In terms of policies, the Efficient Buildings Ordinance, so that's a policy where we require benchmarking for buildings in our community, 25,000 square feet and larger. Last year, we had a 90% submittal compliance rate, which is really great compared to our peer communities, we're really excited about that and have data now for 238 buildings within our community. You may remember, we did update that ordinance last year to change the scope, working with the state of Minnesota, but continue to hope that we have a similar compliance rate with the buildings that still work directly with the city of Edina. Our Sustainable Building Policy requires sustainability elements if we provide a project TIF funding, other financing, QUD zoning, and we kicked off one project last year that did fall within that policy. So, working with them to ensure that they build a more sustainable building in our community that they would otherwise. For the carryout bake fee ordinance, we have reporting underway, we have sent communication to businesses, I believe a postcard hit mailboxes last week. So, we're getting reporting from those businesses that are required to charge the fee and report the fee. We anticipate compliance reporting to be complete around early April as we get all of that data, go through it and are able to provide that report to our Energy and Environment Commission as well as the city council, be able to show what the impact of that policy has been. So, as we think about implementation, there are some challenges, I think as the mayor mentioned, there are a lot of things to celebrate, there has been a lot of success, but there's still a lot of work to do. So, as we think about achieving and implementing our climate action plan, there is current, you know, limited staff capacity across departments and divisions. I'm not the only division that implements aspects of the climate action plan, I work a lot with other departments and divisions and on top of all the other work that we're doing. So, there is some limited capacity and budget to do this work. There are some strategies that we have within our climate action plan that are just outside the scope of what we can, can control and on sometimes in the sphere of influence. So, as we think about transportation mode choice based on the available options, we can't force, force met council to provide bus transit in certain areas or to provide a stop. We can encourage, we can request, we can have those conversations, but it can be difficult to achieve that if it's not within our own individual control. We have heard from residents and businesses, they're choosing to delay projects until more funding is available. We've heard that the IRA and state rebate should come up, become available sometime this year. I will note, when I started this work and this was first passed, it was later this year, next year, next year, but we do know from the state of Minnesota, they do have funding in hand, so we are hopeful that that, those funds will be available this year, that will just further incentivize projects within our community. There are individual actions that folks are taking that result in small incremental changes that we don't realize right away. We see that over years through behavior changes, through efficiency projects, renewable energy investment. Within our land use and our transportation sector, those strategies are gonna be determined in our future comprehensive planning process and that's gonna affect long-term emission reductions, so looking much further out to future development within our community. And then, as I mentioned, we encourage, we work with folks on behavior change, but that can be difficult not only for individuals to implement, but also very difficult to measure, but it's something we are working with our community to do. So, those are these, the, the cap sectors again, just to provide context of how to focus between now and 2030, 63% of our emissions reduction need is in that transportation and land use sector. If we think between now and 2030, of the emissions that are remaining to meet that 2030 goal, 63% of it needs to come from that transportation sector. 37% from buildings and energy and then less than 1% between the waste management and water and wastewater. Again, that bottom row of sectors that we have contribute, but really are focusing on that climate resilience and equity. So, as we're looking ahead for 2025 this year, we have our ongoing policy and program implementation, doing a lot of different community education outreach with our Green Corps member and other divisions, continuing to pursue grants to fund our climate action plan work, working with the state and other agencies to, to provide that funding. And then we're also reprioritizing some of our cap actions to have a very, based on what we know from our greenhouse gas inventory and other studies, what are things that we can focus on as a community between now and 2030 to achieve our goals. In 2026 to 202030, what we see is implementation based on the work we're doing this year and then we'll have another greenhouse gas inventory that will be completed based on the 2025 data. And then the, the chart on the screen is just another representation of where we see our emission reductions. As you can see, the biggest wedge is that transportation sector. And that's the presentation I have for you tonight.
Yeah, that was a, as I mentioned earlier, just a great deal of information you've provided to us and I think we've got some questions that folks would like to ask and I'm gonna turn to Councilmember Jackson, who was on the Energy and Environment Commission for several years and this is near and dear to her and I'll let her lead off.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, thank you, Manager Bear, this is a lot of information and I think that your day-to-day job must be very complicated because if you can squeeze all that into a presentation, I know you're doing a lot more work beyond that. So, for everybody on your team and in the Energy and Environment Commission, I truly appreciate all the work that you do, I want to say thank you. I want to particularly thank Matthew Gabb for his grant of writing, I'm, I'm in awe and he's been a great addition to the team and so, thank you very much to, to Matthew. Home Energy Squad visits. I know this is, it's a simple thing, it's low cost and basically, I, I've done it twice and the improvements that we've got were worth far more money than the $50 that we paid for it. How do people go about doing that and what is the cost currently to get a Home Energy Squad visit?
Yeah, so the Home Energy Squad is a program delivered by, it's sponsored by Excel Energy and Centerpoint Energy, delivered by CE, available to residents in 1-4 units. The cost to get a visit is discounted by city of Edina, so it's $50 for a full home energy audit, includes, they look at your attic insulation, air sealing, furnace, water heater, air conditioner, and then if you have opportunities, they install energy saving measures on the spot, so new LED bulbs, weather stripping within certain doors. To sign up for that, you can go to our city website and sustainability page to get that contact information or reach out to me directly and we can get, get folks connected to, to do that visit.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, the third thing I had a question about was the composting. Is Hennepin County doing any kind of new pushes to alert people about composting? Is there any kind of momentum in that area? Sad to see the numbers going down or going the wrong direction.
So, our composting program is managed by our Public Health Division, we have a organics recycling coordinator, Twyla Singh, who manages that. So, she's much more knowledgeable about that. I do know Hennepin County has a zero-waste plan, they're putting more effort into achieving that. So, I know she as well as other folks working on that are hopeful. We, part of our Green Corps member, Gabriella's work plan is to engage folks on organics participation because of that kind of flatlining. We want to see folks more engaged in that program and diverting their waste and making sure that their proper waste disposal, there are a lot of things that can go in the organics bin that people are just putting in trash such as food waste.
Great, thank you very much.
Your councilmembers, Ragno.
Thank you. Given that Councilmember Jackson was just talking about compost, I'll kind of double down on that and, and think about just waste management in general. You know, one thing that actually came up when we were talking about the possibility or exploring organized trash collection was also doubling down into the recycling program that we have. I hear from a lot of people that like they fill up their recycling when it comes every other week. I don't know if we've evaluated the cost or the potential impact of offering recycling on a weekly basis instead, but I'm just curious if that's more broadly a need or maybe just a couple of the people that I've spoken to have indicated that. But then I'd love to hear from you too, if you have any hypotheses on why we've seen a decrease in the utilization of composting. I see it, I, I don't think that there's very many of the compost carts out on my street in particular and you know, when you're driving around on, on that Tuesday in my neighborhood, you can see, so have you done any types of surveys or kind of voice of the customer in our community to understand why that's decreasing?
So, the, the first question around weekly recycling, again, so my division doesn't manage that, I, I support Twyla and Sylve's work in that. So, that could be a follow-up question where we can, can answer that because I just can't, I could hypothesize, but will not do that. And then in terms of just participation, one thing I've heard from Twyla in my conversations with her is folks are only putting their cart out when it's full instead of every week or even if there's just a few items in there, they should be putting their cart out for pickup instead of just waiting to do it until it's full. So, I know that's something that she's been communicating because that's how we calculate some of our participation counts as well as kind of just that further engagement of letting folks know that, education of what can go in organics compost versus trash bin. I think folks would be pleasantly surprised, but maybe just surprised to, to learn the number. I think folks would be pleasantly surprised, but maybe just surprised to learn the number of items that they have that they're putting in their trash bin that could go into that compost bin.
Awesome, thank you. And I know that that's in like the 1% category, so don't mean to spend too much time on that. I think it is going to be really important as we look to our budgeting process and having conversations about, I mean, we know, right? And I think as a city, we've been talking about how can we save more, spend less? And so it's always hard because I've had multiple people come and say, we need to be doing more about our climate action plan and investing more into taking those actions. And at the same time, we were, you know, last year facing the possibility, right, of a 13% levy increase. We just got off of our weekend of budget discussions where we are doing everything we can to avoid another substantial increase to levy. And so I think it's really important for having updates like this and understanding where we're going to get that benefit of continuing to invest. And I think that's like maybe just like broad feedback in general is like, how can we tie the investment to, and the greenhouse gas, like this is data, I love it, like this is powerful? And where can we tie it to more quantitative, like dollar value impacts to the city? Because that makes it an easier story to say of like, yes, we're going to increase investment into this, yes, we're consciously making that decision, and this is what the ROI on that investment is expected to be, and this is why we're consciously making this decision with the tax dollars. And so I know you're already a partner in that, but I'm just saying like, that's the reality of the situation of, I love all of the work that you're doing, and I, you know, I hear more funding would help drive these things faster, and you know, especially seeing those numbers of like, we're not necessarily off trend yet, but we're not going in the right direction if we look over the last two years. And so it's always like, how do we correct that? How do we get back on trend? And when the answer is more investment, right, it just, it gives, puts us in a hard position of how do we balance all of those priorities as a city? So I know you know all of this, but just reiterating, really appreciate all the work that you're doing. And even the more that you can do in just like closing the loop on that storytelling, I think will make it easier for us as well.
Member Pierce, thank you. Member Agnew.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Transfixed by Member Agnew's observations.
Thanks for the presentation. You actually answered one of my questions, but I've got, I probably have three, but then just more of an observation. The one I was going to ask was about the data for the bag fee, and you answered that. And just an interesting thing there, I've been to three different cities, and these were all Targets, and the Targets didn't even offer a single-use bag. So when you checked out, if you needed a bag, you had to buy a 99-cent Target bag. So they didn't even have single-use bags. And so that prompted me to ask the question, or maybe I'm making more of a suggestion, but the question was, how progressive are we at looking at what other communities are doing? And so I think it's kind of easier for us to look, right, with our sister cities as opposed to, one of those cities was in Hawaii that did that, and the other was a Target in Duluth. And so just curious, how progressive are we across the board when we're thinking about getting more creative with some of our solutions?
Yeah, we definitely, so through different networks we're a part of, including the Urban Sustainability Developers or Directors Network, we're connecting with those other communities to talk about what are, what are you trying, what is successful, what have you piloted? To think about here, specific to the bags is, I would say, compared to peer communities in the state of Minnesota, so we are limited by state statute of what we can do. We can't say, we can't ban bags, we can't tell them not to distribute, but that's where that fee comes in. In terms of leading from the other cities, I think one thing that we do is requesting that data. So Minneapolis and Duluth that have a bag fee, there is no reporting requirement. They don't necessarily, they can't quantify the impact. And so I'm hopeful of the data that we are requesting, we'll be able to kind of measure the scale of the impact. But in terms of changing the policy, definitely conversations that we've had with folks just broader across sustainability in terms of the things that we're trying to do.
Awesome. And so this wouldn't surprise you that I asked, why are you charging a dollar for a bag? What's forcing you to do that? And then the response was, like, the city's not, the business is doing that. And so they have, they have different reasons for why they are trying to do it. And so I think the bag one is a good one where we kind of took on this, the nickel ordinance, and we took, we were the infantry on that, like, we took the bullets for that one. The other model, the establishment did it, and so, and it's just different, it's a different model. And so that's why I asked that question. And then through that lens, the other question, when you look at the results, we're showing the results as being linear. I think we're showing them as linear.
We're forecasting in a linear direction in terms of that solid line, but the gold diamonds represent the actual emissions reduction compared to if, there's an infinite number of ways we can achieve a 45% reduction. So what this just represents is a distribution across based on the climate action plan consultant's model and just assume straight-line linear reduction to 2030.
And so then my, okay, so the way I interpreted that is right then, so the volume dictates the opportunity, right? Okay. So that's good. And then the, so that question was going to be related to, at some point, we will need a compounding effect to get to 2030. And so it would be interesting to consider that, just to start to look at the data to see where we might need to kind of increase our efforts so that we can get to that compounding effect sooner. And then the last one, I thought your, every slide that you had, even the last one was good, that had the proportion of the 63%, all of those are good. 63% transportation, 37% building. Like, it strikes me that we have to, and you've heard me say this before, we have to get to a point where our awareness is creating enough dissatisfaction to change behaviors. And so the, when I look at this slide and see that 63% of the reduction needs to come through transportation, and I believe you guys did this, so I'm kind of almost making this up. And so if you, if that is true, then to Member Agnew's point, if we focus on wastes, that's not going to have enough of a compounding effect to reach our goal. So then for me, looking at the messaging of everything almost going through the lens of transportation, to say, and this is where I'm kind of fledging this a little bit, because I think this was in your presentation when we looked at hauling. On the waste side, there's a transportation impact perhaps to doing that. And so it's not, I think oftentimes we think about it as residents as wastes, right? Stop trying to dictate my waste. I should have the decision to manage my waste the way I want to. But when you look at that through the lens of transportation and our goal of the 63%, right, you start to internalize the objective a little differently. And so looking at these two, transportation and buildings, I think it'd be interesting for us to start looking at our awareness campaigns and then the projects that we recommend or policies that we recommend, starting to do those through the, those two lenses, because we'll need that compounding effect from probably both of those areas to get there. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to come back to Member Jackson, but I'm going to go to Member Rusor now.
Thank you for your work in the presentation, and I really, the one slide that kind of got my attention was 13 with City Hall Energy Management, and I appreciate the energy savings as well as the energy being generated. And agree with Member Agnew that having a monetary data point connected, that would be wonderful to see that slide, you know, with those figures on it, and it would also be wonderful, you know, with our signage that can change messages outside of City Hall. I don't know if it could be written in a very pity way, but you know, X amount of dollars were saved from the solar panels on the roof of City Hall. I think that would be a really good message to get out there. And it's really fun to see more and more people putting solar panels on their houses. So thank you for everything you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Back to Member Jackson. I think Member Agnew has something else that's triggered too. Member Jackson.
Yes, just very briefly, I would appreciate seeing some data or slide of the benchmarking program that we have. I know it's efficient, it has a new name, but just to see from its inception to the present, what the change in energy of the buildings are based on our city data and broken out. I know this follows a climate action plan that predates that, but I would appreciate that information. Thank you.
So Member Jackson, are you thinking that on, I think you mentioned 238 buildings we had information on now? That's an important point you're just raising is that, you know, how do we go about helping you with this? You and the commission, really, you have your chair with you tonight. You want to introduce your chair. And this sort of massive workload that you've undertaken, all of you collectively as a commission, and Chair Lukens, you want to come up just quickly and stand by Ms. Bear? Here.
I'm just back.
Yeah, I don't know if you have any comment with regard to any of the council members have raised so far, but.
No, I would just echo, Marissa's been fantastic. I think from a hiring perspective, you guys did a great job bringing her in. She's been a fearless leader on all aspects of the climate action plan for us. I think a couple reactions to the comments so far, I would say, one, we have benefited a lot from state and county-level climate action initiatives, so that has helped with a lot of the reduction that we've seen. I definitely applaud the city for a lot of the things that you guys have done for city buildings, city wastewater usage, city fleet, all those things have been very impressive. I think where we, from a commission perspective, are now really focused is how do we take the great work the city has done, amplify it, and get community members engaged around actually taking steps at their own homes, their businesses, and the community? And so I think there's a lot of opportunities in that space. I think things around organized hauling, things around tree ordinances, a lot of these things are all part of the same climate action plan package in terms of signaling what we value as a community and also encouraging people to take steps to improve their own businesses and residential climate action, or waste reduction. So ultimately, I think we're making a lot of great progress. I think whoever made the compounding comment, like, we have a long ways to go before 2030. We're going to continue to bring innovative solutions to you guys. I do think the idea of tying budget requests, resource requests from a city perspective to the, call it, big remaining action items in the climate action plan is going to be key, and we want to work with you guys in the coming years as we do our work plans and really think through what are going to be the things that are truly going to move the needle as opposed to perhaps just virtue signaling what we care about. I don't think a plastic bag ordinance is really moving the needle, but it changes behavior, and it makes people think about it every time they go to a store. So we're optimistic, we have a great leader here from the city, and we'll continue to work with you guys going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Member Agnew.
Thank you.
Member Rusor, you were done?
Yeah.
Yeah, Member Agnew, and then I'll go back to Member Jackson.
We're bouncing you all over.
Oh, you're done too?
Well, and I think even just building off of what Member Rusor was saying too, and tying it back to my comment of, when we know we're making these investments on city buildings that decreases the energy expenses, which would have hit our budget in another way already. And so like, help us tell that story of like, this is how much we saved on gas because of this investment, and this is how much we've saved on energy usage, because that's where we start to build those compounding impacts of we made a one-time investment, and this is what we're saving on an annual basis. And so it helps tell that story of stewardship of resources that I think is all a part of the story. So, and I know you hear it, but just.
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate it.
I, this is a segue off of what the chair had to say, and just now, Member Agnew and others as well. Member Pierce, if you go to Slide 8, you know, I think this is something that our city should be really proud of, if you can find Slide 8 there. That's the city edina's municipal emissions. And, you know, we may only represent 1% of the total community-wide emissions, but look at the progress that's been made here in these reductions that are really significant. And so to the point that other council members have made, and I think the chair made, is that we're a model of behavior for what we want out of the rest of our community and how we get to where we want to go together. And so people in our community have told us, this is important to them, so let's not just talk the talk, let's start walking the walk. We already are, we've got this to show, and this is what happens when you do it. You can make some really important strides. And so some way, somehow, with this awareness campaign that Member Pierce mentioned, I think we need to start tooting our own horn a little bit and encouraging people in our community to follow suit. And I think maybe some of these building owners would be a good way to start because that represents such a significant portion of our potential reductions. Where I get, having, you know, difficulty is, I know that transportation sector is the number-one producer of greenhouse gases. It doesn't matter if it's edina, or it's the state, or it's the country. You know, when you think about our strategies around reduction, and you think about, you know, you had the subcategories of vehicle miles traveled, electrification is going slower than we thought, vehicles, but, you know, in fairness to the public, we haven't come up with a system yet for our town that provides a reliable electrification system all over town where you can fast charge at a level three, and that may make a difference. And then I think transit is really challenging for us because as a suburban community, it's really not a very robust system. And even when we get the E-line going from the university and coming over through the uptown area and coming down France Avenue to the South Hill District, that's not going to move the needle much either. So I don't really know what to do on transportation, other than I really always liked the biofuel fleet conversion, and tell me again where we are on that.
So we're in the process of permitting and then looking at being able to stall a tank. We'll have to put RFPs out to purchase the tank as well as the retrofit systems to install on the vehicle. So we hope to implement it sometime this year. So we would see that impact starting likely by end of year, if not 2026.
Yeah, I mean, and that was, and the big equipment that we've got, as I recall, that was like a 90% greenhouse gas reduction.
Yep, it's a huge impact. Snow plows are really, really expensive if you buy an all-electric one, and then also really hard to meet the service need of plowing roads with an all-electric dump truck snowplow. So we see biofuel as one of our key strategies with our heavy-duty fleet.
Okay, yeah, good, agreed. And then just a shout-out to folks working on Fire Station Number Two, and we were over there Saturday after, as Member Agnew said, working all day on budget issues and got a tour through what's going to be a magnificent building, but to find out that we're going to be near net zero on energy in that building due to the geothermal and the solar, and we have to use a little bit of natural gas for some of the purposes that we need it for. But, you know, that's another great example of modeling behavior for some of the building owners, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then I don't know, you know, with, it's going to be more difficult to have a federal government as a partner, if we try to create some kind of grant opportunities because you kind of count on them being the source of grant funds, and it doesn't look like that's going to be a source of funds unless you know something that I don't sense or others don't sense.
We don't anticipate any new sustainable or climate action funding grants from the federal government in the near future. So we are really leaning into what's available from the state of Minnesota. That's tied to our state budget, not tied to federal dollars, as well as other funding sources from family foundations and other philanthropic organizations are starting to potentially step in to fill that gap.
So our biofuel fleet conversion monies are in hand. We've got. We've got.
We have fully executed grant agreements and then obligated funding, which we have heard means the funding is ours, it's secured, we just have to meet our grant reporting requirements. It's really fortunate compared to some peer communities who have partially executed or partially obligated funds. Those are the ones most at risk, but we feel confident in the executed agreements that we have.
Okay, good. That prompt any other thoughts from other council members? Yeah, great report. Thanks for the good work. Thanks for the work you're doing for the residents of our town, for us as a council, for the city. Really appreciate it. Chair Lukin, thank, and pass on our gratitude to your commission members as well. Appreciate you being here this evening to participate in this update. All right. Let's move on now to the next matter in front of us. We're going to exit that portion of the agenda. We're going to move on to reports and recommendations, and the first matter here is potential adoption of Resolution 2025-25, which is a final site plan, site improvement, performance agreement, and revised landscape plan for 7250 France Avenue South. And our Community Development Director, Kerry Teague, has this matter. We've got the developer available for questions. We've got his landscape architect, if you will, firm available as well, I think. And we've all been eager to find out what happened over at 7200. And the last time we had a conversation with you, Director Teague, you were still gathering facts. And I'm pleased we got the developer here tonight to be able to tell us what he knows. And because I know that when we adopted that resolution that said, "Don't touch the trees", he was comfortable with that idea. And so, we're all eager to find out what happened, and how are we going to fix this so that we give, we get some screening there again. So, Director Teague.
Yep, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, we had this one all teed up for final site plan approval, the site improvement, improvement plan agreement, revised landscape plan, and addressing the tree removal for the 7200 France project. So, the way we had it set up tonight was to do those approvals for the 7200 site, which is the site here. 7250 is the southern parcel, so you recall, this was the approved overall PUD for the site. The site, so the, a building permit has been issued for the 7250 site, and that work has started. Recall, as part of that Phase One, all of the site improvements, all the public improvements, the sidewalks, the landscaping, the courtyard, the north-south connector through the site, the sidewalk there, all of the grading and the landscaping was all to be done as part of that building permit. We had the approvals tied to the 7200 site, because that's where the, that's where the work took place. The applicant has requested that we not take action on those, on those issues tonight. We're going to still talk about the landscaping, but not take action on the SIPA for 7200, the resolution. We would, we would recommend that you table that to the April 16 meeting, and we tie that revised landscaping to the 7250 site, the project that's going on now. So, we need to make those revisions to the SIPAs, the resolutions, I'll work with the city attorney, and bring those back to you on the 16th. But we do, again, want to talk about the tree removal and give you some background on that, and perhaps you could provide some feedback on this revised landscape plan that we've been working with the developer and landscape architect on.
Well, the general notion is that when you come back on the, if we table it to come back on the 16th of April, that we would tie the landscape improvements to Phase One.
Correct.
Which is already approved and underway, as opposed to waiting until Phase Two starts to give the neighborhood some more immediate relief, is what I interpret that to mean.
Correct. And you recall, some of the feedback that you received from residents had some concerns about, well, what if the 7200 project doesn't move forward? And yet, the landscaping and all the bonds are tied to that site. So, there's some added protections, being that that site is currently under construction.
Okay, so what we'll talk about tonight, then, is landscaping?
Yes.
And what happened?
And what happened? I've got some, I've got some pictures to show, and then I'll present.
Sure. Member Jackson's got a question as we march along here.
So, before we go on to the trees, I just want to ask, the courtyard in the middle may or may not become an underpass. How do we, at what point do we help these guys do their project, but, you know, either, that's still an open question. So, how can they build the buildings if that's an open question, I guess, just procedurally?
Yeah, so, the Phase Two has been designed to accommodate either option. So, if the underpass does not happen, they can still accommodate it. So, that flexibility is still there.
Okay, so none of the decisions that we're going to make in April have anything, have any solidity around that decision?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thanks for that question. Yes, Member Pierce.
Just a clarification, it's not apparent to me why we're pushing this to the 16th. So, if you could just speak to that again, if you already have, and maybe I missed it.
Yes. So, the agreements and resolutions that are in the packet this evening tie the revised landscape plan, the performance bonds requirements, to the 7200 site. The thinking from staff was, because that's where the landscaping took place, so we should tie that to the site. What we'll come back with is tying that revised landscape plan, all the public improvements still, to the 7250 site, the work that's taking place.
So, you need time to do that?
We need time to do that, right?
Thank you.
Okay. Yep, thanks for that restatement.
Okay. So, to get into the landscaping, so, as part of that Phase One improvement that was to take place on the 7200 site, the trees along the western lot line were supposed to be saved. So, you can see, I've highlighted them here in yellow. These trees up here were not removed, but these, in this location, were removed.
Member Rissar has a question for you. Director Teague.
There's a lot of different information out there, and if you read the Site Improvement Performance Agreement for 7200 and 7250 France Avenue redevelopment Phase One, and you look at Item J, which is on Page 10, it says specifically, "The developers shall preserve the existing trees along the west lot line to provide screening from the residential homes to the west. If the trees do not survive, additional trees shall be planted in the area providing screening at a variety of species and sizes, subject to the approval of the city forester." This is just all trees. It's not 14 trees or 19 trees, it's all the trees. And so, it's really hard, it's kind of like having two clocks, you don't know what time it is. But, you know, I think we should go for the highest standard that was put out there, and that was preserve the existing trees.
So, this is the tree removal plan, the trees along the western lot line that that's referring to is these trees here. So, this was part of the approval package for the 7250 site.
Right, and I guess we can keep talking past each other, and I don't know if what I'm saying is confusing, but what I'm reading is that all the trees, not just select highlighted trees, but all the trees were supposed to remain, and that's.
That wasn't the intent.
This ambiguity is very concerning, and this, this was stated very clearly, preserve the existing trees.
Along the west lot.
Yeah.
So, he's saying these are the trees. There was more, there was more vegetation there than just trees, is what I'm interpreting him to say. But regardless, it may not make a difference if we get to a point where we can make lemonade out of lemons, so to speak. So, let's, let's see where this goes. My suggestion. Go ahead.
Yep, so now to move into the pictures to show you, so you have a visual of what took place. So, I've drawn in the lot line, it's kind of skewed just based on where I was standing, kind of at the bottom of the, the low spot. So, here are the residential homes to the west are here, 72nd is up here. So, the, these are the trees, some of the trees that were removed on the, from the neighbor's property.
On private property.
On private property, right. So, again, here's that line through the site, and so, yet, there were, there was some shrubs through here that provided screening in addition to those trees, that of course were to be saved as well along here. So, the trees that were removed, that were indicated in that yellow graphic that I had showed earlier, those are these trees down here at the bottom of the low spot. So, you can see there is quite an elevation change to the homes to the west. Again, some of the trees that were supposed to be saved. Looks like this here was an old retaining wall that went through the site, some of that still remains. But this is a look to the south, so again, here's the lot line. You can see what was removed on the private property, and then these were the trees that were removed, that were supposed to be retained. So, all of this area in here, from the low spot up, that was supposed to be preserved and protected. So, this is a look at the landscape plan that the applicant is proposing. So, we think there was about 11 of the somewhat bigger trees that were removed. What they're proposing here is to plant back 20 trees on their site, and they're proposing eight on the adjacent property site. So, there would be some 10-to-12-foot pine trees, some larger black hill spruce, 15-to-16 feet in this area here, red pines in here, 10-to-12 feet, white pine down here, 10-to-12 feet, a couple of tamarack, and again, some taller 15-to-16 black hill spruce. The thinking over on this east side, so this is that low spot where the retaining wall, or the retaining pond is going to be, so you can see the site slopes up toward the housing to the east. So, the thought was, if they could plant some evergreen trees in here at that high spot, it would provide some additional screening for the residents there to the west. I do want to emphasize that the city doesn't have the authority to require this landscaping on private property. We're just trying to facilitate some type of a solution here. The developer is going to have to go and work with those property owners to make it right, and they've indicated a willingness to do that. They want to make this right moving forward. Also want to go back to this site here. So, in the field, there was supposed to be tree protection fencing, that's what this kind of dashed line is indicating. They were supposed to put up tree protection fencing to protect those trees prior to any work. The property line should also be staked, but that, those weren't marked when the trees went down, so I think there might have been some confusion there. So, moving forward, staff has been talking about this, how can we prevent this in the future? And I think we need to do something similar to what we do with single-family home teardowns, the residential redevelopment. Not issue any type of permit until the property line is staked, and that tree protection fencing is up, and staff has to go inspect that before any work can take place. So, we will put those, those things in place moving forward. I think that concludes kind of an overview of the trees and what happens, happened. And again, Mr. Carlson is here to answer any question, questions, and Terry Monarch, the landscape architect, is here as well.
Director Teague, were there, can you recall if there were any conifers amongst the trees that were cut down? What I remember is mostly deciduous trees in there.
Yeah.
So, it looks like this would be more of, this plan would be more of an all-season screening mechanism than what was there before, and maybe.
Yes, that's exactly right.
We'll hear from the developer about that and his landscape person.
Yeah, that's why staff was recommending the year-round screening to provide that year-round screening, as opposed to, you're right, it was mostly deciduous in that area.
Why don't we bring Mr. Carlson up here and Mr. Monarch? Oh, yes, Member Jackson, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Director Teague, just remind us what the, how we enforce this, that they don't get final sign-off on the building unless it's approved by staff, or what's the step that say, oh, yes, these trees were actually planted, and it's been accomplished?
Yeah, so, once the trees are planted, we hold a letter of credit for the value of all of the landscaping, plus the irrigation system. We hold that, and we hold that for two years to make sure they survive. We haven't had issues with developers replacing trees when they need to, but in case they don't, we could use that money then to, to replace the trees that.
Okay.
Someone may or may not be willing to replace.
Okay, thank you.
Member Rissar.
Another concern that I have, and I went out and I looked at the site from 72nd Street, and if you follow the little pink flags all the way back to the southern section, you can see that there's a lot of bundles of material that are set up behind the chain-link fence that may be on the property of the Cedars. And then, there's a bunch of tile that has been, or granite tile that has been dropped off.
Back here.
Way back in that area. And I'm just wondering what that is? Is that material for the project, or is that, that's somebody else's material that's been delivered?
Yeah, that's from the Cedars.
Okay, so the Cedars is putting material, but also, okay, because some of it is on a resident's property. Okay.
Yeah, it looks like, you're right, it looks like, we run across this in properties that have bought city parks, where people dump their clippings, tree branches, things like that.
This looks like construction staging. It's fresh material.
Back here, yes, yep, back here, for sure.
Okay, so, my biggest concern is that, you know, the land has been damaged, this could be a problem for erosion. The project is having a retaining pond, and when this development project came to us, I don't remember, maybe I've forgotten it, but how is this very steep land going to be protected? And I don't really have, I feel like I don't have a good understanding of that, especially after I went out and I looked at it and I saw the flags down so low. I mean, is the idea that there's going to be dirt that is going to be built up on the neighboring, I mean, I don't, I guess I just don't understand how.
That may be a good question for Mr. Monarch. That's a good question, but just, I think, let's bring up both you and, both Mr. Monarch and Mr. Carlson up. I think first, let's talk about, from your perception, what happened to cause this situation, and then, secondly, the proposed solution, Mr. Monarch can talk about, and why.
Well, good evening. Ted Carlson with Orion Investments at 66th and New York and Edina, and I want to offer my sincere apology to council members and adjacent residents, because it's certainly not our intent to keep the trees and then take them down. So, what we can do is just continue to improve communication with the neighborhood. We're meeting with the adjacent homeowner tomorrow onsite at 12:30, he's a former council commissioner member, and try to fix this situation. So, as regards to the landscape plan, we believe it's robust, we believe it's even more robust now with the changes that Terry can talk about. And while we strive for perfection, sometimes we fall a little bit short. So, I would just offer that, you know, we're going to make this right. We've been in the neighborhood for a long time, been in interactions with K-9 Blitz. I first presented to this council in February of 2007. We're not planning on going anywhere, so with that.
Yeah, you might, I think you still, Mr. Carlson, if you could tell us, based on your knowledge, what happened? Why did this, why did this happen?
Well, I think it happens because when the team is onsite, you know, we maybe sometimes have a little bit of conflicting, what's a good tree, what's a bad tree? We heard in an earlier presentation about invasive trees or low-quality trees, and I think Nine Mile Creek also. Creek also has involvement in this project, um, because they're the watershed authority that issues permits here. And they want everything to be high-quality, um, uh, trees, species, grasses, and everything else. So when our team was onsite removing some of these, I think that some of the trees maybe in their mind or in other direction was not that high a quality and they shouldn't have been removed and they were. So I think there's a process that's concerned to be improved moving forward on our side of the ledger.
Do council members have questions for Mr. Carlson at this point in time? All right, let's bring Mr. Monarch up here and we, you know, we, we see the problem. We see what happened and, uh, how do we, how do we potentially take advantage of this sort of, you know, this landscape tragedy and, and make it better than it was before?
Surgery.
Is that possible?
Yeah, it's possible.
And then don't forget to answer Member Russo's question about, uh, how do we protect the slope from erosion either?
Yeah. There's a few questions. Um, so one of your first ones, uh, commission, or council member, is there was, um, the property to the south. The fence is a construction fence which probably should have been put on the north side or the west side as well and probably would have avoided this happening, but it was put on that south side. That delineates the property between the Cedars and this development. So all that material that's stacked up there has been there, put by the Cedars. Uh, some of those leaning trees you see there, some of the larger trees, that's on the Cedars property. So those weren't touched. There's also a section, it's really kind of confusing, um, the back of this property. Um, I don't know if you can see on here if I show you, this being the property line, but the neighbor's fence is actually way back here. So it's kind of deceiving as to where the property line is, like if you just look at it, because you'd think the fence would be the property line, but it's not. So I think what's happened over the years, I don't know if there's an agreement, but over the years, the Cedars or somebody has dumped a lot of material back behind that furthest south property that borders this property. So there's old, there was like at least six feet of leaves. Um, there was, um, you know, broken branches, tree stumps, rock material, debris. It's actually been leveled with a, with a, like a, some kind of power dozer to actually dump stuff in there over the years. So I don't know if there's an agreement that's happening there, but that's what that stuff is over in the corner over there. So.
It looks like new material.
Yeah. And some of it is because they just recently put it there. Yeah. So, but it's nothing to do with this property. So a lot of that stuff down there, and there wasn't really any trees there because that's been cleared. So they, they could dump there over the years. A lot of the trees are the second property to the north property. So those first two properties from north to middle, that's where these trees were impacted. So, so that being said, um, yes, the trees were removed. That is a travesty for sure. So what we came in and we tried to look at how we could repair this or mitigate this. Um, it's always tough, obviously, to mitigate a mature tree, right? Like how do you find a, you know, a 24-inch, a 12-inch, you know, boxwood and place it on the site that you're going to have a canopy that exactly blocks your view as it does today. But, um, talking to the city forester, we think a diversity which follows the city's tree ordinance program to diversify the plan, make sure that we have a mix of species and we don't just kind of single-species this and try to come up with a simple solution. So there's a couple of things in play here. You could see the steepness of the property in that original photo from the back of the fence as it came down to an old retaining wall. It's almost impossible to plant on that. And there aren't really any trees growing on that. But there does come to a level spot where the old retaining wall might have been. So we think that's a place where we can plant a lot of this diversity of spruce trees. Um, so there'd be some black hill spruce, there's be some red pine, there'd be some white pine. And that would kind of create that all-season kind of, you know, coverage there. We're thinking eight to 10 footers would be possible to be at, get in here with a machine. I think anything beyond that, we wouldn't be able to get a machine large enough. Maybe with a crane, we might be able to do that. But it's also a concern to plant on a slope like that and destabilize a lot of this existing condition, which we're worried about with a steep slope. Um, there was a bit of understory here. A lot of it was buckthorn. A lot of it was just kind of, like, all this is actually voluntary that's growing here. But a lot of the stuff that was here is kind of just scrub brush. That'll all pop back up. There's actually a lot of grasses and different things in the understory that'll pop back up. You don't see it now because it's winter. So that hill will be stabilized by that. However, there is from the property line into the area we're doing, a lot of grading that'll happen for this storm pond. So that's going to be all treated and replanted with a lot of understory stuff that's part of our plan as well. So we're starting with the coniferous border, the evergreen border, and then we're also mixing in some larger, um, uh, deciduous trees as well. So it's kind of a diversity of canopy. So we'll be able to get some taller canopies in there as well, um, to be able to provide some of that screening. And then long-term, probably be a healthier tree community as well. So, um, the red dots on the plan actually show what we're adding in addition to the original plan, which had over 25 trees going into the project as well. So this, a lot of this is just on the edge of the property line, what is shown in red and north into the private residential properties. And there's actually an easement that occurs. You can kind of see this, this easement right here, um, kind of on the border of that easement that runs through the back property. So that kind of helps us to define where that property edge is as well.
So these are new additions to what your existing?
The 20 are all new to the original that had over 25 plus a ton of understory. So if you look at this plan to the left, this is all the planting that's going in with the new 20 trees that we're proposing as well. Um, we also thought about the sightlines of these residences and what we're trying to block. So we've added in additional coniferous and deciduous trees on the higher side of the roadway that passes behind the development and the sidewalk and the pedestrian connection. So that'll be added in here as well to help increase some of that. Some of the, um, larch or tamarack that are going in here, those are kind of a wet tolerant species. So it gives us some more evergreen, um, and color in there as well. But it can grow in that wet environment that this may or may not have depending on, um, storm infiltration at the time. So, um, there are three to four, maybe five existing trees. We show three that we really know, but there's a few more that are still remaining on that top corner of the property. Um, there's still currently a, um, like a pump, uh, like a water, is it sewage, like a storm pump or something that exists on the site? That's kind of in a fenced-in area there. That'll be cleaned up and, and, and taken down too. There's, you know, a lot of old fencing and stuff that's on the site that's being taken out that'll clean that up. There's found some barbed wire and different things out there as well. So that'll be cleaned up as part of this property as well. And then we're actually increasing the planting to the, to the south that, you know, um, even though that wasn't an area that we touched or was touched as part of this, um, removal process, we're adding more into that area as well. And that would be that area that's currently being used as somebody's dumping site. So.
Yeah, go ahead, Member Russo.
You would need permission to do that. That's private property. Right. Okay. And, um, but just thinking, now that I'm more familiar with the site, I, if you could talk a little bit about how you're going to create this pond on the border of the, you know, property lines and you've got such a steep pitch and you're not going to do anything while you're grading, while you're doing all of that, that will be detrimental to the neighboring property. I just.
So the pond starts pretty much right at this red line. So that's where the pond starts, um, kind of on its edge, but most of the pond actually starts where this arrow points here. This was that series of trees that was intended to be saved. Um, so the pond is more in this direction of the site.
And the little pink flag, um, shown by the snow, uh, that is a lot line flag, right? There's a, there's a stump and there's a, a little flag?
Sorry, I don't see that.
Yeah.
This one right here?
No, down.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. So the pond is going to be right on the property line, it looks like.
The property line is actually a little higher up. That, that's a different elevation point line for the pond stating.
Okay. So that's not.
Yeah, that's not part of the property line. The property line is where, um, Mr. Teague showed it. So yeah, so most of the pond happens in this lower slope here that isn't as drastic. A lot of this is going to be regraded, um, and redefined as part of that area. A lot of this will be left. Now, when we come in here and plant, we'll have to figure out a way to do that with minimal invasion or whoever the contractor is will have to do that. So whether that's via smaller equipment, hand carry, a crane, um, that's, that'll be the best way to be able to get in there potentially.
One of the versions of the plans, um, people were shown walking around the pond and the idea is to have a pathway. How are you going to protect the neigh, I mean, it seems like there should be.
It doesn't. It doesn't go around the pond. It skirts, I'll see if I can find that original plan right here. It skirts this, this edge, this eastern edge, and then comes along the north. The grades didn't allow that to happen. This was kind of the final. And, and it's kind of part of the, the new promenade underpass idea is that this pathway would connect, come through and then go through this way as well, but also connect up to the Nine Mile Creek Trail. So yeah, it's more of an overlook, um, experience along that edge and a couple of respite areas located in two different places.
Member Pierce.
Um, so.
Member Agnew.
If you can go, I'm not sure where it is now.
Which one?
Actually go back one. Okay, on this slide. Um, so I got a few questions. So to go back to the earlier point about all trees, just, I, just making the point, when I look at this, there are trees on here that are marked to be removed. And so I assume all trees are all the trees that are not marked to be removed. So that was the way I interpreted it. And so when I, now go to the picture that we were just looking at.
So are you, are you indicating the, um, sorry, these trees as well?
Yeah, yeah. All those were marked to be removed. And so the things that were not marked, that's what I assume all to be saved are all of the ones that are not marked to be removed. That's just the way I interpreted it, right or wrong. Um, and so here's the, when I look at this, I'll tell you guys my, my challenge. When I look at the photos, this one, and then there's the other photo that has the, the, where you can see the pond, I, I actually, having gone out there and seeing these photos, I, I don't, I actually don't believe that those trees would provide a ton of screening, especially because they're not, like they're not evergreen trees, right?
The ones that were there.
The ones that were there, yeah. And so, but that doesn't mean what happened was okay. And I don't think we should try to say, well, we're just going to make it even better, right? We have to lean into the fact that we removed trees we shouldn't have removed. And somebody should pay for that, right? Um, there's a lot of blame to go around, right? And so, but when I look at it, I do have to, to be honest with my reality, when I look at this, I actually don't think that those trees were going to provide a ton of screening. But we did say we weren't going to bother them and we did. Okay. And so with that as my personal, I'm going to say that's my personal truth. Now go to your new one. This looks great, right? There's more trees there, right? There are trees that should provide screening. But the challenge is, we said we weren't going to do something we did. And so now we're coming back and we are going to approve at some point a plan that we all look at and we say, well, that's better than what we had planned to do before. But you can't really go to the, you can't really go to the residents and say, well, no, we didn't do what we said we were going to do. But now what we're going to do is going to be better without us somehow being able to say, and here is how you can trust that we're going to do what we said we're going to do. And so that's the, like for me, that's the, I don't know how to answer that. But for me, that is, um, the rub for me. Um, and then the second point, and I, you guys can address that or think about that. The second, um, ask that I would have, and I don't even know if we do this, um, and I go back to the resident, Nora Davis, in this meeting, put up a picture of 40/40. And so you could see, she was actually talking about the, the four stories versus three stories. Um, but it just struck me when we were looking at this, you could see in that photo where there were tree limbs. And so, uh, in the past, residents in her neighborhood have talked about screening of that building. And it's easy for us in springtime, in the summertime, in the fall to say, ah, look, you're not going to be able to see that because the leaves are there. And then those leaves go away and you get the view that Ms. Davis showed of 40/40. So for this, like, is there some way that we can project, we talk about sightlines. So I know we can do sightlines, but is there some way that we can project from different spots in the neighboring community, what their views would be with these trees in place? So that, like now, we could say, ah, you know what, we thought, you know, these black hill spruces would be good, but yeah, it looks like that may not provide the screening we want. They need to be something else. And to be able to show that, um, so that we have some comfortability, a little bit more, um, comfortability that it'll be screened. We use these, these circles and right or wrong, I think we internalize that as screening. And if they're overlapping circles, we think, well, that's going to screen completely. That's just the way, we, we internalize it, but that's not actually true. So is there, so then my second question is, is there some, I don't know, I guess I'd say modeling tool or something that could help us see, uh, what the impact might be to the residents? That's it.
Yes. Yes, we can definitely do that. Um, I think, uh, it was a quick turnaround to, you know, with reaction, getting people on the site and getting some feedback and us drying up a plan and then coming back with a revised plan that kind of provided what we think is a good mitigation. But we could easily take one of the photographs and Photoshop in what it's going to look like from this side. If with permission from the resident, we could go into their yard, take a picture, um, from their patio or their view and show exactly what that looks like. We, we do that all the time. I've done that for buildings, uh, you know, that are proposed and what the screening will look like over time or what it'll look like set in an existing forest area. There's always this misconception understanding when you see these voluntary forests that look lush and full. And then all of a sudden you pull the trees and the ground cover and the shrubs from the edge and it's like, well, there's no branches on this thing. It only has green on the top. Um, so it, it's, it's always tough for sure. Um, the, the point about the trees in the bottom and what would remain, all trees or just the trees that were past that one line? The hard part is, is the thing that trumped this location was the stormwater requirements because it had to have stormwater. So those trees with the stormwater requirements would not have survived in this location. They're all volunteer box elders. Um, they're not even on your plantable list in the city, but they wouldn't have survived with the influx of stormwater that is going to be happening here now that it's actually a maintained system versus a parking lot.
Well, I'm sure the residents would appreciate having that kind of, uh, analysis if you would. Can you have that done by the 16th?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
Across multiple seasons?
Yes.
All right.
Yes. Well, the big ones, the big one is summer and winter.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Um, was it related to this?
Clean.
Okay. Well, can I just, let me just ask my second one and then I'll be done. Um, I do want you to think about the first question. Like how do we, what, what commitment, whatever words you want to use so that, um.
I'll let the developer answer that question.
Well, and you don't have to answer that tonight, but that's a question that, that I have because for me that is the, the rub. I think we're going to end up with actually a plan that's better than what we had before. And if you're able to show us what the user or resident experience will be, we can adjust it even more. Like I, that feels good to me, but I still have the rub of, well, how can we assure the community that, that we didn't do what we said we were going to do the first time, we will this time. Um, and so when you come back on the 16th, you can answer that. I'd be totally fine with that.
I think that's a question more for Director Teague, but if you're asking the question...
But if you're asking the question, what are the legal rights of the neighbors that had trees cut down on private property? And what are the city's rights relative to the developer being responsible for not doing what was required under the resolution? Those are questions for Kendall, and I think, and Kerry Teague.
As well as the developer? What are you saying?
He, what he wants to do has nothing to do with what the legal rights are of the private property owners and the city. They might suggest for a solution.
Oh, sure, yeah. So I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't thinking about necessarily the private, the other homeowner. I was speaking more specifically about, we had a site plan that marked some trees that were not supposed to be removed, that were removed. You're right, some of those were removed on private property. And so we will address that. The developer is talking to those owners to figure that piece out. And then the commitment is what I'm saying. Now, we're going to end up with a new plan that will get approved. So what assurance can we give that we are going to honor that plan? That's more what I'm saying.
I'm going to have Member Richard hold her thought, because I want to go to Member Agnew, who's been waiting.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Carlson, why wasn't the property line staked out and tree production fencing applied in that area?
I don't have an answer for that question, Councilmember Agnew, other than my team screwed up.
Is that common practice for you across your sites and properties?
My common practice is to hire best-in-class team, evidenced by the man standing next to me today and the typical people that we work with. So I don't have an answer for you other than it should have happened. The site was very thick, it's very steep. I think there was direction from multiple parties that the trees would not survive in the location that they were, that they're not on the city's list of approved trees. And when the contract subcontractor was there, they were directed that if they thought it was in, best for the city, not necessarily best for the city, but to follow the city's forestry policies, that they should potentially be removed. So that's what happened. So I don't have anything else to offer, other than it was a mistake.
Okay. I mean, it's clear, right? This is a difficult situation for everyone, because we can't put the trees back, right? We're in a situation where we can't go back.
I have a lot of empathy for the people who order this, and I have a lot of empathy for the neighborhood and the people around it. And no one wants to be standing here to explain the screw-up. But when things happen, and I lead a team, it's my job to accept the responsibility. So that's why I'm here. And furthermore, my responsibility is to try to take a crummy situation, make it better, or lemons into lemonade. So when you hire best-in-class people, they don't dodge their responsibilities, and they're going to make things right. So that's the intent of my team, that we will go above and beyond to make the situation as best as we can in light of the fact that some trees that were, shouldn't have been removed, were removed.
Thank you, thank you for that. I think another part of this, and I'll echo the overall sentiment that Member Pierce had in, I do agree that in time, I believe that the tree coverage will be better with this plan than it was previously. I do believe that. What's hard, though, right, when we're having these conversations, especially with the residents there, is on what timeframe? And so that would be another component that I want to understand when you come back. I know that there's not going to be an answer to that tonight. But understanding, you know, what will it take from a number of years perspective to get to that full growth that we're anticipating these trees to get to? When you look at some of those pictures, they were big trees. And, you know, I won't, you know, argue whether it aligns to those trees and that species to our city policy or any of that. They were, they looked from the pictures like older trees. And so I know that it will take years, and I kind of want an estimate on, are we looking at five years, 10 years, 20 years to get to that ideal state? Because that matters, right? When we're talking about the impact to the residents. So no, not expecting an answer on that tonight, but when you come back.
What we'll do is, in those renderings we talked about, and I think when Mr. Carlson meets with the resident, hopefully he can get a couple photos from that view of the property. But we'll show you what it's going to look like day one, and then we can show you what it's going to look like in 10 years. And that'll give you an idea of what it's going to be. So, a rough idea. We don't know what nature's going to do and what's going to happen, but that'll be the intent.
Thank you. If you could also pull back up the imagery that shows the red circles, the big ones and the little ones, and help me understand the distinction of why there are, it looks like a similar species potentially that has a small circle as well as a larger coverage circle. Are those actually the same species, or are they different species?
You're talking about these little red ones here?
No, on the right side, there's like a big red circle, and then like a medium circle.
So the red on this side was, the note above says, the red on this side are just the additional trees added to the approved plan. So after what happened, we came back in and added everything in red here. Everything in red here was not in the original plan. It was only to the edge of the property line. So we added all these in. But what was added in, there are a variety of sizes and a variety of tree species. It's kind of been generalized here a little bit, but most of the ones on this edge of the property line are all the coniferous trees that were added in, kind of for that all-season screening. And then we backed that up with some deciduous planting in and behind it. So that's where you see some of the larger circles. Those are hackberries and maples and different things like that. So kind of trying to fill in, get that same-sized canopy that was there before, trees that will grow 40, 50 feet tall at full maturity, so.
Wonderful, thank you for that clarification.
And it's the same thing on this side, by the way, as well. So these are smaller evergreen, these are a larger evergreen, and then you'll kind of see the mix in here. These are some birch trees, these are some swamp white oaks and different things like that, so.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm seeing is, really, there's the two, I'll say, problems, right? The first is that the trees along the lot line weren't preserved as expected. And I agree with Member Pierce's assessment of, we received a site plan that showed which trees would remain and which trees would be removed. So I am speaking specifically to the ones that were indicated to have remained. So I think that this plan, right, alleviates those concerns, replacing those trees. That's from my city lens. But the other part of this is there were trees that were removed from private property. And I understand that my levers to pull as a city council member are not as strong on the private property component. But I want to be included in that story, and I want to receive assurances that those residents have been communicated with. I want to understand that they've bought into and agree with the plan that will be coming to fruition. And I want to, I want to make sure that those residents feel like we are making them whole again as best as we can, knowing that we can't uncut trees, and we can't make that same level of growth happen overnight. So I know we can't wave a magic wand, but I do want to know that they've been communicated with and that they're buying in. So that will be, I think, just as important of a component for me as we're looking to the site plan. And I do know, right, that we don't have as much of a legal standing there. But I want you, as a part of this mistake, Mr. Carlson, that you admit to making, to come to us with that story and close the loop on that, if you can, please.
Message received.
Thank you.
Member Richard.
I do want to say, I went out there, I looked at the view from the backyard, and I do understand that a lot of these trees were volunteers. I do understand they were buckthorn. My understanding is when buckthorn is cut down, it comes back and abandoned, and that's not necessarily a great thing. So there's that, but the view, regardless of whether it was a forest of shrub, you know, scrappy trees, was still something that meant there was screening and privacy. And now it was pointed out that you can stand and you can watch people actually walk all the way into lunes, byerlies. There's nothing to block your view. You have, and there's nothing. And so when I hear, we'll put trees in, but it's really slopy, we're going to have to go down to where it's level, I don't know if those trees are going to have any impact and provide any screening. So I think, you know, having really patient and, you know, open conversations with the residents is really important, because their experience has been very, it's changed dramatically with those trees coming down. So that's a problem. The other thing is, refreshing to hear, it was a mistake when it came to not demarcating where the property line is. When is it going to be demarcated clearly, so that we're not going to have any, you know, issues with people going on to the neighboring sites in the future? Because I, you know, there's little flags, but when, is there going to be a chain link fence? Is there going to be, what kind of screening is going to go up?
Well, the site is staked now. I don't think that we had planned for a fence of any other kind to demarcate the property line here.
So that will be sufficient?
Well, I think the intent was to really just landscape it and, I don't know, Terry, what words you use, but improve the hard scape and soft scape up to the property line and beyond, if the residents choose for us to do that. I don't know if I'm answering your question appropriately.
And I'm just concerned with that steep slope, and you're doing, you know, grading and everything, and is that going to slurp on over into the neighboring properties and that kind of thing?
I think I can answer that, you know, we're very tightly regulated by a watershed district, which until now has kind of been left out of this conversation. So we need to adhere to all kinds of standards, Terry, to comply with stormwater erosion runoff, so on and so forth.
They will be providing erosion protection as that basin's built and seeded. So none of the trees that were removed were on the steep, steep part of the slope. They were just on the edge of the property line. And a majority of that area from this property line down is intended to be totally regraded as part of this basin. It's intended to have ground cover seeding, it's intended to have erosion control blankets, it's intended to have a lot of shrubs and understory planting as well, that will kind of bring it back to a healthier community than the buckthorn. But it will fill in, and it will stabilize that. Everything beyond this property line up, whatever's disturbed as part of this tree planting will be treated in the exact same way to get the seeding and the erosion control that's needed to maintain and stabilize it. So that'll help it from collapsing or being in any type of condition. I think now that the boundary has changed, the same principles that had to be done to follow the erosion control has to be done in this same environment on the private property, just to be able to maintain it.
Q.
We also, the resident that's on the corner does have a row of evergreen trees. They're not doing very well in his property, so I think when Mr. Carlson meets with him, that's a potential to maybe add even another layer of planting. But that's on private property, so we didn't address that.
Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you. So all this discussion, we started with Member, or Director Teague, telling us about staking and putting up tree fencing ahead of time. And this is an operational question for you, Mr. Carlson. If we had required, as you've described, sort of a difference of opinion on the site and a mistake, and it sounds like there were a lot of cooks in this stew. If the city had put up the staking and the tree fence before you were allowed to do any sort of work, would that have been effective in protecting these trees?
Yes.
Okay, so if we adopt that in the future, hopefully that will help. So operationally, they would have looked at that, said, we're not touching it, and then gone to work, and all this debate that seemed to have occurred on the site would have been moot?
Correct.
Commissioner Neal wants to weigh in on this issue.
We don't stake, the city doesn't stake the site. The property owner does that.
But if we had the requirement that they couldn't do any work before it was staked and wrapped, can we require that?
That can be our requirement, right?
Yeah, so if we put that requirement in, and that would have been in place, then this whole argument and dispute wouldn't have happened.
Potentially, yeah.
Well, I mean, you're, humans can screw up in any number of ways, but...
Less likely.
Less likely, okay.
It would certainly mitigate risk.
Okay, good, thank you.
And to be fair, when we found out this happened and came out to the site, it literally took us, the civil engineer, and the city forester about 15 minutes to try and figure out the relationships of the property line to the site, because it wasn't staked, and understand how that could have happened. Because we were like, oh, it's those three, those three trees. No, it's those three trees. You know, based on the drawing, it was really hard to understand it. But the drainage outflow thing that's on site helped us locate the true property line in our minds, and that helped us understand what it was. So yes, I think you're right, that would have probably helped.
Thank you.
Couple of things. I think it was one of the neighbors that first got ahold of me and said this is what was happening, I think it was by email. And then what I recall is that I emailed you right away, and you might have been out of town, but you said you'd get right on it, and you were pretty surprised, too, as I recall. So I appreciate you getting on it, but it was too late. But I also appreciate you standing up and saying you're responsible, that this is, and you're going to make it right. And so that's important. I mean, it was, it's a devastation for the neighborhood, really, but I think we all think we can, we can make it better, you know? And we can, and you're willing to step up and do that. You're going to work with those private property owners, is my call, I think my colleagues have drilled down on all the key issues. I thought that Member Pierce's idea of making sure that neighbors, when you meet with them, and when you come back here on the 16th, we can see some sort of Photoshop notion of what the screening will be like. Because we all drove by there for a long time, thinking that the trees that were there and kind of the scruffy understory stuff would stay, because it was a pretty good screen, except probably in the wintertime, because there were no conifers there. But nonetheless, even the branches helped break up the profile. So we're going to try to fix something that really never should have happened, but things do happen, as Member Jackson points out, even with the best-laid plans. And Manager Neal, one thing I heard in this conversation that gave me a little bit of a pause was, I'm looking at this drawing, and I'm looking at these trees, sizes 15 to 16 feet for a black hill spruce, red pine, 10 to 12 feet. I thought I heard you say, Mr. Menaric, we're not going to probably be able to get trees that are over 8 to 10 feet. So I don't want you to come back here on the 16th of April. When you come back on the 16th of April, let me put it this way. Make sure you tell us what you can do, and you do what you say you're going to do. All right? So if the only, because we face this issue on the west side of Eden, trees on slopes that are too big can't go in, because they can't get the equipment in there that's big enough to handle a big tree, like some of these trees. So let's make sure we all understand what's going in there, and if we can't get these size trees in there, which are big, and are we going to have more smaller trees, because you've got better spacing capability, because they're smaller? You know, I don't know. You're the expert on that. Make sure that what you tell us on the 16th is something that indeed is achievable.
And I think I might have misspoke in the sense of being able to move a tree here with the equipment, smaller equipment. That size would be more suitable. I said, and it's part of that, too, with these larger sizes, we're probably going to have to use a crane. Because that slope, it's very difficult to drive on.
So when you put these tree sizes in here, it was something you thought was achievable?
Yeah, yeah. It's, well, it's a matter of finding them in the market, too, for sure.
Yeah, so I suppose that's another issue, that we've seen that, too, that we require trees of a certain size, and they're not available.
Yeah.
Then what do we do?
Right. And this is talking to the city forester, too. This is kind of what their expectation was with regards to, if we can find this, this is the appropriate...
Let's make sure they're available before you pledge to provide them.
Before we pledge to put them in, yeah. Or we'll be trying to grow them faster.
Okay, okay, yeah. All the way around, I think we're all, we all regret that this happened. So let's try to do the best we can under the circumstances here. So when you come back on the 16th, what I'm assuming we're going to see for a rev... So when you come back on the 16th, what I'm assuming we're going to see for a revised landscaping plan that would apply to Phase One is the existing plan plus the new trees added in.
Yeah, and that's currently what this is showing.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be like this, yeah, okay. Carlson, you concur?
Yes, the uniqueness of this is that the landscaping and the site work on 7200 is part of the 7250 project, the Phase One project, as you noted. And then also on the 16th would be the final site plan and SIPA for 7200, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I was chatting with the city attorney.
Say that again, ask your question again, I was thinking about...
On the 16th, as it relates to the 7200 project, that would be final SIPA and site plan, correct?
Correct, as well as taking care of this issue.
As well as adjusting 7250 to fix this.
Yeah, so I think Director Teague will modify his request accordingly. But we'll cover all the same things we were going to cover tonight, but we'll have a revised landscape plan that'll tie into Phase One, which is being worked on now as opposed to Phase Two.
Yes, sir.
So the material goes in sooner.
Yes.
Okay. And how does that interface with doing the stormwater drainage, I'll call it a stormwater drainage pond? That means you'll have to accelerate that too, I would take, I would take it.
Yeah, that grading has to occur.
I mean, you wouldn't want to put all those new trees in and then come back in and dig the pond out.
Right.
No, and it's also tied to removing the cell tower that's currently on site.
Okay.
So there's a lot more nuances that we needed to further refine.
All the elements of that we'll see on the 16th, you'll have thought all that through?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good. That prompt any other thoughts from council members or staff?
Just...
Member Pierce?
Just to not to forget to answer the, my second question. And just whenever our plan is, how can we assure residents in the city that we're, we're going to execute against it? So that's the other, that can be in the presentation as well.
And I'd just like to offer, you know, our condolences, we're sorry, we don't want to be having this conversation, but when mistakes happen, it's up to us to own it. So empathize with the situation with you all, appreciate the dialogue and we're going to do our absolute best to try to improve the situation. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. All right, thanks, gentlemen. For council members, our development director has recommended that we table the matter, and that matter is Resolution 2025-25, potentially approving a final site plan and site improvement performance agreement for 7200 France Avenue and the landscaping plan that would attach to Phase One, 7250 France Avenue to the 16th of April 2025. Is there a motion of that effect?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves, Member Pierce seconds, motion as stated. Any further conversation on the matter, any further discussion? Those in favor of tabling this matter plus the consideration of the revised landscaping plan tied to Phase One for 7250 France Avenue South, plus Resolution 2025-25 to April 16, 2025, city council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carried. And now Director Milner, you get to talk about electric assisted bicycles. And Lieutenant Vinnie's with us tonight, he's going to talk about it a little bit too.
Yeah.
I bet you don't even own an electric assisted bicycle with all these triathlete things you do.
Not yet, but it's coming. There's so much fun that we all need one. And we would help you fund that through the Conservation and Sustainability Fund if you wanted to get a grant to help you purchase your first e-bike. There you go, I'll put a plug in for that. So yes, we're here tonight to talk about the electric assist bicycles in ordinance 2025-04. Lieutenant Vinnie and myself will be giving you the rundown of this potential change to the ordinance. So we heard some concerns last fall with some of our younger users of these devices. And Attorney Kendall also helped us with a lot of this research. So state statutes does a great job of regulating e-bikes. Just for your information, there is three classes and then there's a whole class of unregulated electric mobility devices you see running around. I saw two of them on my drive in today for this meeting. But Class One is assisted up to 20 miles an hour, you have to be pedaling to get the assist. Again, minimum rider age is 15. Class Two is 20 miles an hour, but you could get to 20 with just a throttle. And Class Three can go up to 28 miles per hour when you're also pedaling. All those have a minimum rider age of 15. Class Three with throttles do exist, but they're not regulated and many of the devices that you see running around are not even part of one of these classes. Cities can only regulate Class Three and the police have many of the tools that they need to address reckless bicycle operation as they do for motor vehicles. There was various transportation conferences that myself and Lieutenant Vinnie have, have attended over the last few months. E-bikes serve a very important transportation function for some. So we don't want to reduce those freedoms because that's some of, some of our residents' only opportunities for transportation. So we'd rather educate on proper behaviors than to reduce those freedoms. Three Rivers Park, which has various trail networks through our city and many other cities, also want to regulate behaviors, they don't regulate classes, and they educate on proper use and operation. So let Lieutenant Vinnie just speak on what we intend to do from an education and outreach.
Yeah, so our goal is educate, not heavy handed, right? So we're working out with the communications team and we just don't have anything to show you right now, unfortunately, but it's being, it's in the process, it's in the works. We feel confident that we're going to get you something out there to work with the schools and work with communities and make sure that they understand what we want to achieve with the e-bike stuff here.
So what are we doing with the ordinance tonight? We are updating definitions to match, match state law. We're adding bicycle path, bicycle trail, shared use path, requiring all e-bikes operated to obey state law. And we're adding that anyone under 18 years of age are required to wear a helmet and adding a petty misdemeanor for anyone under 18 years old not wearing a helmet. So we're recommending you make these changes this evening on first, first reading and wave second reading. We'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions, Member Rissler and then Member Jackson.
I appreciate the work and the goals of this. My concern is with the definition of sidewalk. And when I look at the document in front of us, it's, says sidewalk means an improved thoroughfare located on a public right of way or public easement limited to uses by pedestrians and bicyclists. And the bicyclists has been added and what has been taken out is non-motorized vehicles. Okay, and I did get an email from a resident who pushed back on this definition as well because limited to pedestrians and bicyclists. What about all those track riders? You know, you're really hitting a vulnerable demographic, they can't use the sidewalk. And what I would encourage, instead of this definition of sidewalk, use the definition of sidewalk that is in Minnesota statute 169.011. And then we would be consistent since we're citing that statute. And that definition is sidewalk means that portion of a street between the curb lines or the lateral lines of a roadway and the adjacent property lines intended for the use of pedestrians. And I didn't have a lot of time this weekend because we were at the retreat, but I did look at ordinances regarding sidewalk use from some neighboring municipalities. And I'm not seeing language like the language that is being proposed where we say limited only to pedestrians and bicyclists. It usually is this, this kind of nuanced intended for the use of pedestrians, end of story. But in Minnesota, as this law that is cited in this draft points out, that it, you know, includes all kinds of bicycles. So I guess I just really have problems with the definition of sidewalk. I don't think it's appropriate.
Well, I think I could help on that. I think some years ago, we decided that you could, we did allow bicycles on sidewalks.
We, yes, and a lot of other cities do that, but to specifically say all sidewalks are for pedestrians and bikers is also problematic because we do have the multi-use paths that have to be eight feet wide minimum and some of our sidewalks are just five feet wide. And we're not saying that bikes can't go on sidewalks, but we're saying we're not limiting it just to pedestrians and bicyclists, but we, we're using language that is used by the state of Minnesota and other cities intended for the use of pedestrians. And then everything else sort of falls into place, including the regulations in those statutes requiring people to, you know, make a noise when they're going to go past, to slow down, you know, to do all of those things.
I think that, but I think the inference from using a state definition of sidewalk is that it says it's intended for the use of pedestrians, therefore the inference would be it can't be used by anybody else other than pedestrians.
But if we say it can just be pedestrians and bikers, then it can't be anyone using a tricycle, it can't be anyone using a scooter.
Scooter is not a bicycle.
That's my point.
Right, but we haven't, we haven't addressed the scooter, but the reason that, you know, the bicycle definition under 4B of that section that you cited says it does not include scooters, motorized foot scooters or similar devices. To your point early on, those are the things we're kind of worried about. Those are the things that are going down the sidewalk 25 miles an hour. So the question I was going to ask was, what are we going to do but motorized foot scooters? Because that's where kind of this whole conversation started. People were walking out their front door and stepping onto the sidewalk in front of the house and some kid was going by 20 miles an hour on a, on a scooter, on a, on a foot scooter.
So that's, that's regulated by state statute as well too. The speed limit on those is actually 15 miles an hour. So we have the ability to interact and intervene with those things, just like when anybody's careless or reckless, we have the opportunity, if we're in the right place at the right time, to address that. That's where the education and awareness that we're working with our communications team on is going to be key with this. And I kind of mentioned a little bit about the schools, that partnership that we're going to need with the schools to help communicate this stuff is going to be a big part of that as well too. I don't think most parents even know that if you're not 15, you can't ride an e-bike or what some of the rules or laws are regarding scooters or some of those other devices as well, including some of the motorized vehicles that you can get on the internet right now that are not e-bikes and they're not being regulated. So on those, that's where the education comes in to try to like let parents know that what you're buying is not an e-bike, right? And your child needs to be at least 15 years old. I think if we can get around that, we're going to make a lot of headway, just starting all of that stuff out too.
Member Agnew, and then we'll go to Attorney Kendall, I think.
Thank you, Mayor. So it was, it was a couple of months ago now that we first initiated this conversation and if I recall, it was probably in the fall when we saw an uptick of students getting to school this year on their bikes and their, their e-bikes, I should say. And there was observed behavior that caught, that was fearful, fearful, right? Like we're worried for those students, we want to figure out how do we improve the situation? And so how I understand, you know, that we've come to this spot is wanting to say, okay, what can we do, right? Like what mechanisms do we have as a city to help protect not just our residents as a whole, but especially youth and students across our community when, when they're not aware of sometimes the risks and sometimes the laws that exist today? So I really, really like the focus on education because, you know, that, that has to be the primary component, especially hearing now too, where we can govern, where we can, and some of those things. So I have one very like tactical question, given what I'm seeing on the screen here, and then I have a broader question I'd love your perspectives on. So what is a petty misdemeanor? Like what are the implications of that? And is there any additional repercussions for repeat offenders?
As a juvenile, no, a petty misdemeanor is like a speeding ticket, you know, so it doesn't go on the record or anything like that. My goal is not to have my officers hand out a bunch of petty misdemeanor tickets, that's not what's there. It was kind of a last line of defense when you have that person who is maybe a repeat offender or something, you know, hey, we talked to you last week, you called your parents, you know, at some point, we're going to have to hold you accountable for what you're doing there, so.
So does it have a fee or a fine, I guess I should say?
Yeah, and it depends, it's juvenile court, so they can kind of take a variety of, but traditionally, it's, it's going to be some type of fine based, you know, for the parent, you know, that would have to help work with their child on that, so.
Okay, thank you. And so I guess more broadly, right, we, I appreciate the focus on the education. And then we also have an ordinance in front of us. And so I appreciate Member Rissler's comments about, you know, trying to dig into the, the definition of a sidewalk. But before I even can begin to form an opinion on that, I'm trying to understand what, like tie that thread together for me of how does us defining a sidewalk as being limited to usage by pedestrians and bicyclists instead of pedestrians and non-motorized vehicles, how does that help us with making students safer on e-bikes?
It's a great question. So the, the interesting part of trying to put this together is after we went to the summit, we learned that like 31% of the population doesn't drive, you know, so this is a transportation freedom that we're trying to protect as we were trying to draft this and create this, right? And as we, you know, kind of learned about sustainability is that there's going to, there's going to be a push from like Minnesota bikes that where that five mile or less trip, they're going to try to encourage people to try to use e-bikes and some of that stuff too. We're just, we're not there yet, right? Because our infrastructure isn't necessarily completely set up, but we're going to start seeing more push for not using your car for those five mile or less trips. So how do we create an environment where those who are using e-bikes as a form of transportation able to network through our communities the way it's set up? And I think that's what the, the, I guess our thread with that was, is trying to figure out how do we allow people to navigate with these e-bikes safely and then allows us to, with the, the helmet law and the education in the schools, to address kind of a small portion of the population that seems to be ruining it for the rest of them, so.
Sidewalks have to be part of the transportation system. There's not enough, there's not bike lanes everywhere, but there's more sidewalks. So we felt we needed to allow, continue to have bicycles and e-bikes because that's what we did 10 years ago and we allowed it. And it all comes down to behaviors. You can be a regular cyclist and be a jerk and be on the sidewalks and causing problems too. So it's, I, I even struggle with the e-bike definition because it's any cyclist, it's any scooter. It's just people need to be nice and respectful of all users when they're on sidewalks or trails or the road for that matter, we're seeing a lot of those behaviors.
Yeah, and I think that kind of pairs with the other, the way I was thinking about this is what are the other behavior modifications that we're trying to encourage? And so are, I'm asking this as a question to you so that then we can, as a council, kind of debate it. Are we saying that we want e-bikes to be able to move around the city on sidewalks? And within that, are we desiring, whether or not we have the capability to do so or not, are we desiring any governance within that, whether it's a 15 mile an hour speed maximum or what have you?
Tonight, we want you to allow e-bikes on sidewalks.
Okay. So that, that's helpful because, you know, a lot of the concerns and the feedback that we did get was around the speed of which e-bikes in particular can go. And I do know that bikes can go fast too, right, if someone's pedaling really hard. Do you share those concerns that as a result of this, we might have people going 20, 25, 28 miles an hour on a sidewalk on an electric bicycle? And if that is a shared concern, do we have any mitigating factors we can include in this to prevent that from happening?
At this point, I don't think so. I'm more concerned about the, the ones we're seeing, they're unregulated bikes, they're way above any class, they're almost like a motorcycle. I had someone riding right next to me on my drive here, riding a wheelie on an E something, and that's not even one of these classes. So this ordinance is not going to address many of the bikes that, bikes, devices. I think the education goes to the parents and what kind of thing you're buying for your parents in the first place. When you're under 15, that's not even allowed by state law. So other mitigating factors at this point, I don't see any.
No, and the, one of the speakers that spoke, we were, we asked the questions, okay, you're in law enforcement, what do you do? How do you, what do you do? And they said, don't, they said, try not to regulate the speeds or the classes, so really focus on your education awareness, on the behavior, the etiquette and that, those sorts of things. those sorts of things. Stillwater, for example, has a really nice bike system out there, and they've been battling this for, for years, right? So they have some pretty good experiences with, their emphasis is to, the education piece, a few times a year, they'll set up a tent where they'll have like a booth or like a bike shop to set up and try to, you know, interact with people and stop and stuff like that. And in working with the Parks Department and stuff, I think we have the, definitely have an opportunity to kind of just start enhancing all of that as we move forward with what, you know, trying to, trying to curb behavior is really what it is.
So it sounds like, to the, the point specific to, should we attempt to govern speeds of any vehicle, I'll say motorized or bicycle or tricycle or scooter on our sidewalks? It sounds like you heard from others that that's not best practice. Why? Because what, what I'm hearing from residents is they are directly concerned with people who are going 20 miles an hour. And so if we limited speed to 15 miles an hour on sidewalks in particular, what is the, the negative externality of that?
I think state statute already regulates speeds somewhat.
Yeah, I, I think it's important to remember, I mean, the police have tools to regulate speed if it's reckless, or any behavior that's reckless. So it can be very hard to enforce like a particular speed limit in court. Like, if, if the officer is going to be put in a position to try to testify that they visually observed some e-bike going 16 miles per hour rather than 15 miles per hour, it's, it's hard to prove up in court. What they can prove up is, you know, was the behavior reckless? I mean, if you're doing 15 miles per hour weaving through people walking on the sidewalk, they can write a ticket for that and have it be easily enforceable. Whereas, you know, if you're just doing 15 miles an hour versus 16 or 17, near no other people, that's going to be a hard offense to prove. So I think the, as staff and I worked through this pretty extensively, I think the point we kept coming back to is, if anyone, including children or adults, is operating any vehicle, whether it's a regular bicycle with no assist, or an e-bike, or one of these vehicles that's above the class of an e-bike, that's almost like a motorcycle, they can be stopped and cited for reckless behavior. So I think that's where staff ultimately landed on this ordinance, is not trying to regulate the particular type of vehicle, you know, not having officers stop and try to identify, is this a class three or a class two? I mean, as it whizzes by, you know, or after you stop them, are you going to try to identify that? It's going to be difficult. So this is kind of the best solution that the Police Department and Director Miller and others came up with in terms of just regulating the types of behavior that people are concerned about, as, as opposed to the particular details of the vehicle or the exact speed.
Thank you. I am outnumbered by lawyers up here, which I always appreciate, so thank you for the additional feedback on that. I guess going then back to just the Member Rissler's final point, or point that she made, when we look at the definition of sidewalk, I think by saying bicyclist, we do potentially narrow it more so than we want to of, of what we're trying to regulate here. So we might want to say pedestrians, non-motorized vehicles, and electrically assisted vehicles.
Anything on the road?
But then we have cars on the sidewalk, so, well, I mean, it's just something to maybe noodle on a little bit, Mr. Kendall, because I, I do think that there are additional vehicles that we are wanting to incorporate. Thank you.
Yeah, good, good line of inquiry. Member Pierce and Member Jackson will go right down the line.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I think you guys are being too hard on yourselves. We had nothing before what you're presenting to us, right? And so I think we should start with that lens. So this is an, for sure, an improvement. Now, I think about these things, which wouldn't surprise you differently than what you've heard before so far. I don't really think it matters what the definition of a sidewalk is. We could change that to whatever. Because this is an ordinance that is not enforceable. And so if we're not going to enforce it, then it's going to come down to two things, which you've already said, education, and I actually think signage. So we did talk a little bit about signage before. And so I think in these cases, I honestly only think of an ordinance as a document to guide the awareness and signage you're going to provide. And so when a, when kid goes to school and you're doing the education that says you can't, these are the things you can't do, you have to have some document that guides you on what you're going to say. To me, that's what this is. And if the kid comes home with a piece of paper and says, hey, this is what we learned in school, then I would assume a parent might go look up that, well, what, what does the city say about this? And that's where the ordinance will be, and it'll have whatever material, whatever points we're, we're trying to educate on will be there. And so I actually think skinnier is, is better, rather than trying to have everything in there. But that's just a different approach. And I say that because it's an ordinance that, like, we're really, you're not going to be patrolling the same that you do vehicles that are driving and violating the speed limit. And so that's just kind of how I, I think about it. That enforcement, to me, of this is very unlikely. The one thing that I think is a concern would be the class of vehicles in, you know, somehow saying above a certain class, and I haven't even looked to see how these, these things are classified, but certain things are not allowed at all, right? Just saying they're unsafe, you have to be a certain age, and they're not allowed on our streets, sidewalks, however we define that. I think having that, and then if a police officer is driving by and sees someone on that, then we should enforce that, right? And if it's a misdemeanor, misdemeanor or a petty misdemeanor, I can promise you, if you send Caitlin Pierce home with one of those, I don't, I don't care what the, what the definition is, that's not going to be good for her. But that's how I, I, that's the part of it that I have more concern about, that we have more and more of those on the streets.
Well, I think this is, like you mentioned, a good first step.
Yeah.
The definition of classes, I don't even think that's the thing, it's, it's power. It's how many watts do these things have? Because some of these go 40 miles an hour. So there's so many of them that we can't define them at this point. I think we need to continue to watch and learn from the industry.
I agree.
And then maybe that's coming back and updating this ordinance.
And then the, the only other note I had was this definition of, there's no definition of reckless, but we talked about reckless. We, we do have to protect you guys, and if we don't have an ordinance that says this is by definition how we're going to apply this ordinance, then you are at risk. Then it's so subjective to say, well, that person was being reckless or they weren't. And so that's the reckless and the class, those two pieces are the things that I would be most concerned with. And like I said, reckless is going to end up being subjective. So I applaud you for this first take.
Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make this brief. I, I think Member Pierce saying this is difficult to enforce went to my primary question, but I'm thinking of, I got an email from a lady who walks two dogs. I walk my dog, he's a puppy, he goes all over the place. I see a kid coming down recklessly, you know, riding one of these motorized bikes. I've seen kids, like nine-year-olds riding some of this stuff. What can I do so that I feel safe, so the dog feels safe, and the kid is safe? I, I think it would be heartbreaking if a kid were to, like, run into a dog leash and wipe out and break a leg or kill the dog. I mean, that's also a protection of the dog. How can residents help, how does this help them feel safer? And I know there's part of the education, but, but help me put myself in the shoes of, of somebody who's out walking and one of these things dangerously comes whizzing by me.
It's education, it's got to start at home. Nine-year-olds shouldn't be on them in the first place, so how do you get them off? You gotta be 15.
Yeah.
So it starts at home with the education and going into the schools and...
Yeah, and what we learned from our friends out in, in Stillwater is, they have the same thing, right? The walkers complain about the joggers, joggers complain about bikers and all that stuff. But they found that with the signage that they were able to put up on the trail system to talk about what the proper etiquette is when you're trying to pass someone, you know, like coming on your left or ringing the bell and those things. And our, you know, we have the, one of the best communication departments around that can help us figure out, what is that, how does that translate? How does that catch to remember? You know, kind of, we have the lock around the clock, right? So it's something catchy that we can try to educate and move forward with is, would be my goal with that. I don't know how to specifically answer that question, other than to say, the more information that we can get out there to educate people to understand what it should look like, the better off we're going to be.
And we're also having this discussion as part of the Safe and Equitable Mobility Plan. So that's bringing living streets, the Bike and Ped Master Plan, all into one big plan. So that's something you'll see coming later this year, early next year.
Yeah, so I think having the equivalent of a traffic sign out would be great, you know? Motorized vehicles, not for kids under 15. And, and here, it says speed limit of 10. So, you know, it says, in existing, in the existing ordinance, it says, "Ride at a speed no greater than is reasonable and prudent under the circumstances, and in no event at a speed greater than 10 miles per hour." So just to, you know, have, have something that, so that, oh, I shouldn't buy my 10-year-old a motorized bike, kind of thing. So, thank you, that's my comment.
I think, Member Agnew was getting at sort of the fundamental question for me, this whole debate about sidewalk definition or bikes on the sidewalk aside, why did you decide you wanted to recommend electric-assisted bicycles should be allowed on sidewalks?
It's, again, it's a transportation, just like the comments I've shared with the council many years. Some cyclists are not going to ride in the street, and their only opportunity is a sidewalk, whether that's an e-bike or a regular bicycle, they should be allowed to use the sidewalks.
To me, to me, if you balance out the risks of mixing, to Member Jackson's point, of mixing motorized or electric-assisted bicycles, which are motorized, on the sidewalk with pedestrians, I, I think it's, it's not, it's, I think pedestrians are disadvantaged, I'll put it that way. So I, you know, the part of the ordinance that you're suggesting that electric, to clarify that electric-assisted bicycles should be allowed on bicycle paths, bicycle trails, or shared use paths, and there's other definitions that we could probably include in the state statute, I like that idea. But I don't, I personally do not like the idea that you can ride an electric-assisted bicycle on a sidewalk in the city of Vdina. I'd, I'd put them on the street, because I don't think, when you balance, balance risks of harm, it's worth it, because you put the pedestrians at distinct disadvantage with an electric bicycle rider. So that's my feeling.
Yeah, and I would offer the next step. That rider is now, has a 10X issue with the interactions with traffic, and they're not comfortable riding with cars. Interactions with pedestrian bikes, much less impact, you're going to maybe get scrapes and stuff compared to with a car at over 25, your likelihood of...
Yeah, most bikes are on the street anyway.
But the people that...
They're, they're assuming that risk by being a motorized form of transportation riding on city streets. Most of them are on city streets. I don't see many, other than little kids riding a bike, I don't see kids on sidewalks. I, I never personally liked the idea that we even allowed bicycles on sidewalks until I thought about, well, there's kids under a certain age that should be on the sidewalk with their bike, is it learning to ride a bike and the training wheels come off, or the training wheels are on? But I, I really wrestle with why we would allow electric-assisted bicycles on a sidewalk. My personal opinion.
Mayor, there is something in the statute regarding electric bicycles that says, "A person may operate an electric-assisted bicycle in the same manner as provided for operation of other bicycles." So if the diner is going to permit...
Yeah, for allowing bicycles on sidewalks, and that's your point.
Right.
But I do think, if I take your comment, Mr. Mayor, I think we're looking through the lens, and one of you said this, you're looking through the lens of people who are riding e-bikes and they're not using proper etiquette. And so we're trying to do an ordinance that covers the bad behavior. But when, when I, and Steph and I are on an e-bike, if they're, if we're, and we prefer to be on the sidewalk, just like you said, but if there are pedestrians in front of us, we will get off the sidewalk and pass the pedestrians and then get back on. But what we're seeing is bikes that are much higher class, going much faster than this, and people are, and kids, you know, are popping wheelies and whatnot. I don't know that we see, we see responsible adults on e-bikes not using proper etiquette. Maybe there are, but I don't really think that that's the case.
I think that's true. General assumption, I think it's fair. They're not the only ones riding electric-assisted bikes.
Right. And so, yeah, that's my point, is I think we're trying to come up with an ordinance to address the outliers.
Yeah, I mean, this whole ordinance, this whole ordinance around bikes on sidewalks is so awkward. I mean, when you look at that Section 3, you can ride your bike on the sidewalk, and you can ride an electric-assisted bike on the sidewalk, unless you, you, you can't go where, you have to go at a reasonable prudent speed under the circumstances, no event over 10 miles an hour. You got to slow to a walking pace, which means you got to get off your bike and walk it, really, when pedestrians are present. You got to slow to a walking pace upon approaching or when across, crossing a driveway or an intersection, enter driveway or intersection with clear of traffic. Don't ride on sidewalks, bicycle paths, bike trails, or shared paths where the entrance or exit of a building abuts the sidewalk. Don't ride on sidewalks where posted, you know, so. Why would you, why, if, why would you even want to try to ride your bike on the sidewalk? You're crossing driveways every 50 feet, every 75 feet.
Right. And so that's where I was going with...
Thing is, it's just ridiculous.
That's where I was going with those, everything that you just read that's in there. To me, that's education, helping people understand this is proper etiquette when you're on an e-bike. I just don't think it's going to be enforced. And so it comes to me down to education and signage. So I'm, I agree with you, the dilemma of how to do that, but it's a challenge.
Member Rissler.
There's also, if you do read the ordinances that are listed, these are just a few of the items that were pulled from those ordinances. Because if you go and you look at what the state has, it says like, leave a safe distance when overtaking a bicycle, make an audible sound when, you know, approaching another bicycle. And there's, I mean, it's a huge document with, you know, you shouldn't transport objects or have another person on your bicycle if the bicycle is not designed for that. So there's a lot there. But I want to go back to my first point. When I looked at what other cities are doing, they, they don't, they just kind of limit the idea of sidewalks are intended to be used by pedestrians. And it's a sort of beautiful, simple statement. I think that's what St. Louis Park does. And then you look at the definition provided in the statute that Minnesota has, and it's, again, sidewalks are intended for pedestrians. And then you put in your language about how if a bike is going to be on a sidewalk, it should be regulated. And I'm comfortable with that, because then it doesn't exclude other users. And I think that... And I think that's important. And you can say, this is the first attempt, so why not just take it as is? But I think it's important not to exclude other people, you know, like on tricycles or, and some elderly people are now riding tricycles. So that's a thing. You know, you just, you have a bike with another wheel. And so anyhow, I like the idea. I'm only hung up, if you had not put "and bicyclists," I would have just totally gone for it. So I just, I think it needs to be tweaked. It's kind of like with the pet store ordinance, I think I would love to see that come back. We just need a neat little definition and then we can check it off.
I'll just add, like, my final thoughts on this. Earlier in our agenda tonight, we had Marissa Baer come in and talk about how the biggest lever that we have for greenhouse gas emissions is around transportation. And so I, you know, I hear that we do have residents that feel safer using bicycles, e-bikes, what have you, on our sidewalk facilities and our shared-use paths. And so I do want to continue to encourage that, knowing how much of a lever that is towards our climate action plan. So just to tie those things together for us.
I'll add a couple of quick comments. So this ordinance does not have to cover reckless, careless behavior. That's already covered in state statute. There are definitions of that, and if police officers see that, they can cite that. So you don't have to cover that in this ordinance. The law regarding bicycles in state statute is extensive, as Member Rissar indicated, and some of it is somewhat contradictory. There's some state statutes that indicate it's legal everywhere in the state to operate bicycles on sidewalks, as long as you're doing so lawfully. And then there's another section of a different statute, which I cited to the mayor, indicating it's legal to operate electric bicycles in the same manner as other bicycles. So I think you could spend a lot of time trying to make this perfect and maybe never get there. We can certainly tweak the definition of sidewalk if that's a sticking point. That's not hard to do. I don't think the definition of, I guess maybe in this ordinance relating to bicycles, the definition of sidewalk excludes tricycles, maybe, but I don't think that police officers would ever cite someone for operating a tricycle on a sidewalk. So I mean...
It's a type of bicycle.
It's a type of... It's a type of bicycle, right? I mean, it's got, it's, it's, it's got three wheels and not two, but it's the same type of vehicle, right? So I don't think you're causing a problem where the police are going to be stopping people from operating certain types of vehicles on sidewalks. So of course, we'll modify the ordinance however council directs, including modifying the definition of sidewalk if that's what's requested. But from my perspective, this ordinance does kind of get at the basic goals. But if you, state statute also does allow cities to do certain regulations of Class III e-bikes, and if you wanted to look at that, that'd be an option. Staff is not recommending that. I think the bottom line from staff perspective, and I won't, I won't speak for staff any more than I already have, but it's education and outreach and enforcement of careless or reckless behavior. And the rest is kind of understood that common sense will prevail.
When we decided that, a few years ago, that we were going to allow bicycles on sidewalks, I was concerned about commercial areas and other things. And I think at the end of the day, after the conversation we got at the council, I really got comfortable with the idea of it. And I, I haven't heard of any accidents that we've had involving bicyclists and pedestrians on sidewalks. But the point that Member Agnew made early on, we have had quite a few, I think we all have had contact from residents who've had near misses with motorized scooters and maybe some electric-assisted bicycles. So back to my, yeah, my concern about recommending electric-assisted bicycles be allowed on sidewalks. And I don't, I don't know quite what to do with it. I suppose we could experiment with it and see, on a vital program basis and look at it.
You also know staff's...
At the end of the summer and see if we... But I can tell you, the first time we have an incident where a kid hits somebody walking down a sidewalk and they run an electric bike, we're going to, we're going to hear people say to us, "What the heck were you guys thinking about? You nuts? You allowed these kids to go down the sidewalk 20 miles an hour and plow into one of us walking down the sidewalk?"
And I would offer, you're not even going to be able to tell the difference between a regular bike and an e-bike. They're getting to be where you can't even tell because the batteries are getting smaller and smaller.
Yeah, maybe.
Well, I guess you know staff's, staff stands if you can either table it indefinitely and we can bring it back, or you can tell us to adjust it, I guess.
Well, I think, I don't know. Let's see, what's the inclination of people? You want to vote on this?
I'd like to change the definition to intended for usage by pedestrians because, A, it's parallel with state statute, and I just don't like the word limited because that means that we can limit it in a way that we probably can't.
Which section are you in?
Section one, the definition of sidewalk, public right-of-way or public easement intended for use by pedestrians. And then, then it's parallel and, I don't know, and allowed for, you know, bicyclists and other non-motorized vehicles or, and I don't know. Or we just leave it be and we vote on it tonight. But I think we have to have something because this is a problem and we can't get out and act unless we have an ordinance. I think Member Pierce has it. And then we've got to do something because spring is coming and it's going to get dangerous. We saw wheelies this evening, so...
If we use the state statute definition in section one, which is recommended by Member Rissar, and we eliminate the words "and bicyclists," there, what does that do with respect to our ordinance? It says bicyclists are specifically allowed on sidewalks. That's still standards, is the, the word intent, not limited, not limiting it to pedestrians only.
Are you asking whether you can change the definition of sidewalk?
Yeah, I'm asking you, I'm asking you if under Member Rissar's suggestion that we use the state statute definition that a sidewalk means an easement limited to usage intended to be used by pedestrians, period.
Intended.
What?
Not limited.
Well, not limited, but intended.
Yeah.
That makes a difference.
Which is what, what I found other...
Why don't we bring the language back at the next meeting? We've heard some comments and attorneys can take a look.
Yeah, I think it'd be just, it'd be better if we could bring a clean copy to you. So if that's the direction that looks like the council's going to go.
Yeah, take a look at that.
If we could get a clean copy of the pet store ordinance, because I thought that was just right, ready to go, it just needed a definition.
Okay, and bring it back next meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. So much for that 9:30 estimate.
Is this a motion to table it or? Because I think you do need to do that.
We're going to, we're going to entertain a motion to table further discussion on ordinance 202504 to the next meeting of the city council.
So moved.
Second. A motion, second, Member Agnew, Member Pierce, seconds. Any further discussion, those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. This matter is tabled at the next city council meeting, which is what, April 2nd or something?
April 1st.
All right, now we're on to another interesting topic. Any comment changes? I've seen some of the emails, Manager Neal, that you've become the owner of this.
Yes, that's regrettable. I do not have a recommendation for this. I'm professionally indifferent to how the council wants to handle this, and I should be. This is a key element of your role in the community is how you interact with residents. There was some interest expressed from council, from council members about perhaps ways we could modify the current practices. I shared with you some, some potential ideas, really from my experience in Eden Prairie before I came to Udine in 2010, is where those came from. But they weren't meant to be a recommendation. They're only meant to say this is how some other community does it. There are a thousand ways this is done across the country and cities across the state and cities all over. So that's what I would offer you. But I think the sense that council, I got from council is you either want to move on this or put it, put it to bed so that people can feel better about it. That's where we are.
So I could give a little historical perspective too, I think, as best I can, that I think when I first got on council, of course, we didn't even have recordings. We just, we didn't have a communications department. We didn't have any audio or, I think we had audio but not visual capability, video capabilities. And then public comment was way at the end of the agenda.
Right.
So people were sitting around until midnight, 1:00 in the morning sometimes, to be able to opine on what they were concerned about. So we, we moved that way up to the beginning of the meeting. And then we had some folks that would take 20 minutes and some folks that would take two minutes or 30 seconds. And we decided to use a timer on it and allow a reasonable period of time. I think many of us had been to the state legislature and had one or two minutes to get your point across. And we thought three minutes seemed like an adequate period of time to treat everybody fairly and let them give their thoughts on issues that were of concern to them. And then, as we have the ability now to be able to broadcast to the entire community, people's thoughts get to be shared on a broad basis if folks care to watch the meeting or watch it after the fact. And that was something that we thought was really transparent and good due process. And put it at the beginning of the meeting, give everybody three minutes, everybody gets treated equally in terms of time, be gentle about telling them the time is up, which I think we're good at. And then if they've got written materials, submit those for the record. And we had some issues come up during the fall election where, I recall, that people were using it as a political platform. And so we talked about, what are, what are some of the things other cities do? And we found out what other cities do, and we've talked about what some of the other cities do. And a lot of them do it different from us. Eden Prairie is one example. Bloomington's another example, where they, they just meet in a separate room with an audio recording and people, they say people can come in and they feel more comfortable. Not everybody feels comfortable getting up in front of the city council on TV and expressing their opinion. But as we've gotten all this information, at least for me, I feel like, okay, so you get, you get, you get, you take, you take some shots once in a while as a public official, as an elected official, maybe during public comment. It kind of goes with the territory. And so I've come to the conclusion that I don't really feel like we should change anything. We've got a good process. And let's just stay the, that's my opinion, is just stay the course. If we get criticized, let's, let's take it and move on. And make sure you treat people with respect and, and give them a chance to give their opinion and we move on from there. So that's kind of, that's my, that's a little bit of history. And then I guess I just evolved to my own personal conclusion. I don't, I don't really feel like changing the method that we use right now. I think it's a good one. Member Agnew.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the introduction. I tend to agree. I think that as elected officials, like, that's part of the role, right? The one part, though, that I would just offer for discussion is, and this is kind of an observation of what some other bodies have done, is there an opportunity for us to be more, like, potentially cut in when there is, like, critical or directed comments towards a staff member? Because that, for me, like, they're not elected officials and that, that personally, I think, crosses a line. And so maybe that's something that we could layer in. I think the school board may have done something similar of like, if your comments are, you know, negatively directed or just like, maybe we just say in general, like, directed at a specific named staff member, that that won't be allowed. Just thinking about some of the, the things that make me uncomfortable, and that's when we're talking about, when we have members of the community target staff members by name, I just, they're, they're our staff, they're not elected officials. I just don't feel as comfortable about that.
There are some protocols, I think, Director Bennerott, that you, you advise people of when they're going to speak on public comment, that's certainly something that we could, we could add to the, to the litany of things that we ask people to be mindful of and respectful about is, don't get specific if you've got criticisms of a staff member, just make sure that you, you use it in a general sort of way, or make that criticism in a general sort of way about staff versus a particular person on staff, you know? I've also been involved in city councils in the past where the staff member was criticized significantly by a council member. You know, it was kind of that kill the messenger thing. And that was, that was worse. We had to deal with that.
We will probably have to check with our lawyer, just because I do know that, like, what is it, First Amendment rights?
Content regulation.
Yeah, the content regulation component to that. So let's double-check that. But that's, that's where I think for me, it does become uncomfortable.
Yeah, go ahead, Member Pierce. Thank you.
I, so I don't think, I don't think we should change anything. I have two points to make. One, I think it is about decorum. And so I actually don't have an issue if someone talks about staff. However, if it's done in a way that is disrespectful to any of us, then I do think there should be, there is decorum, that's expected. We're expected to treat everyone with decorum and that should be reciprocal. And I would highlight, Mr. Mayor, that when that has happened, the few times that I can think of, there are examples where you have done that, where you've said, hey, we're not, we're not doing that, right? Don't disparage whomever. And so I think, to Remember Agnew's point, I think any of us could do that, right? We don't have to wait for someone to jump in and say, hey, that's not appropriate. And so that's one thing, we could have some statement about maintaining decorum. So that's one thing. And then the second point is, I started by saying I don't want to change anything, I guess with a caveat. I was intrigued by the comment made, and I think this might have been you, Manager Neal, that there are some cities where people aren't comfortable coming up front to speak. And so, I'm not trying to make more work, but I guess I am kind of asking that question. If we would get, if by doing something to make it easier for folks who aren't comfortable coming up here, if that increases engagement somehow, that we do our standard process and there's a process for people who maybe don't want to come up and speak, I actually would like that because then we would be providing two vehicles for people to give us information, even if that's, they're recording something at home and submitting it or whatever. Like, I think any of that would be fine. And I would definitely be a proponent of doing something like that if we think that that is going to increase an opportunity for people to give us feedback.
We do have a calling feature, which is...
Well, that's true.
Which is different than...
Yeah. Yeah, that could be it, yeah.
You raised a really interesting issue. You know, when I think about having the conversation with the mayor of Bloomington, as I, as I sort of alluded to on a, on a... with the mayor of Bloomington, as I, as I sort of alluded to on a, on a simple sort of basis, but he specifically said that there are people now that come that have issues in their neighborhood that they feel comfortable talking to the council members about in a more private setting. So maybe once a month, we could carve out, you know, quit the, you know, stop the work session early and come down here for a half an hour in the mayor's conference room or something and sit and have people come in. But if you wanted to give people like, you know, that weren't comfortable being in front of the city council and the whole city on, on television.
Yep.
We could figure out a method to accommodate that periodically.
Right.
That's an interesting idea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well.
And you, you have been unfairly faulted for.
Well, I threw out an idea. I threw out an idea and we've had a robust discussion. You know, I would love for people to keep decorum, but that violates the First Amendment. You got to take it good, bad, and ugly. And if we turn off the camera, the temperature goes down. But I, the discussion has been overwhelmingly from lots of some very nasty comments and some very thoughtful comments, but overwhelmingly that people enjoy having community comment on the camera. I also have heard from people that, you know, some people have a fear of, they fear public speaking more than they fear death. And so to come before the city council on camera would be torture for them. So I like the idea of a release valve for those folks. And, but you know, I, I do listen to what people say. And like I said, I appreciate especially the thoughtful people who put some thought into what they were thinking about and didn't just call me names. But that's what ideas are for, are to get a stimulated conversation. And I think it's been robust and I'm fine leaving it the way it is, but I really like the idea of a periodic chance for people who don't want to go on camera to come talk to us.
Okay, thank you. Member Risher.
Can I ask though, just before, you said decorum is against the First Amendment? I don't think that that's true. That's not, so I'm not saying we should, we should censor people, but just saying that we expect, we're being respectful, we expect everyone to come in and share whatever they want to share, but they should respect the chambers, dais, be respectful of us. That's all I mean when I say decorum. I'm not trying to limit what people say, but.
Well, actually, one thing that I did think of is no props. I think that when the weeds came in, sorry, Ms. Weston, that was a little overwhelming. So I think we could get rid of props and not violate the First Amendment. But yeah, we want people to, we can ask them to, to observe decorum. If they don't, there's nothing we can do about that. So yes, we can ask them.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
To, to respect decorum. I think that would be lovely. I would never raise the issue if I felt that was happening.
But there is a crossover point too, beyond, you know, if they aren't decorous, if they aren't treating.
Then we have to take it.
Well, but there's a point at which it could become something other than free speech.
That would be a threat against your life.
It would be some kind of threat.
Yes, a threat or intimidation, yes, of course.
Yeah. So there's, there's no blanket ability to come in here and.
Right, but it's pretty broad.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but it can cross over into hate speech or something else, threats.
Yeah, yeah.
Member Risher.
I like the way this dialogue is going. And I think we really did have some very thoughtful communication and I really appreciated, and now I can't remember the resident's name, who summarized and listened to all of the community comment over a period of a year. And that was just amazing to me. I have been that person at the podium, coming forward with an issue as a resident. And I think just for me, there was an issue, I had to come three times. And then even after the third time, what I said got skewed and was not accurate. And so I did what I thought was the only recourse I had. I went on Nextdoor. And so I do appreciate how sometimes people are here and they're not necessarily showing as much decorum as we would like to see. And I think it's important, every time I came before council as a resident, I did not want to be here. I didn't, I would much rather have been gardening at home or, you know, doing something like that. But, so I think it's important to understand if people are taking time out of their lives and they're coming here and they're saying something, they really feel they have to. And, you know, so I view it that way when people do come forward and I try to stay that way. I think it's wonderful thinking about community comment. I think it is for us, but I think it's for the community. And I'm going to stop there because I think we've all said enough and I think it sounds like we need, do we need a motion or something regarding community comment to keep it the way it is, or what were we planning to do with this?
Manager Neal, thanks for the observations you had.
I'm not sure there's a good answer to Councilmember Risher's question, other than you certainly can, if you want, have a, have a motion to continue current practices and protocols around community comment.
Well, I think we've got maybe a two-part motion. One would be that to continue community comment as it is presently structured, but to also explore the opportunity for a session with residents who don't feel comfortable being on camera periodically. I won't say once a month, but I'll just say periodically and you can look at that. So is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
A second.
Here's moves, Member Agnew seconds the motion that we continue community comment in its present form and that we explore the opportunity to provide other forms of community comment off camera periodically with the city council and residents. Any further discussion? All's in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? All right, thanks for that discussion, good discussion. Clerk Allison, I don't think anything's come in that we need to be mindful of from a communications standpoint during the meeting. And we'll go now to Manager's comments, I think.
We do, and I don't have anything for you tonight.
Okay. Member Risher, you have anything for us?
I do. We, as we said, had our retreat and one of the ideas that came up was to work on implementing credit card fees. And Hennepin County does this. I don't know if anyone got caught off guard paying for their tabs or whatever and you use a credit card and, oh my, I wish I had come with cash. But I think that's a really good idea and the sooner we can implement that, the sooner we can start getting that revenue coming in. So I just encourage that we do that as quickly as we can. Do it right, don't rush it, but I mean, get it set up and get it going. And that is all I have.
All right, thank you. Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on the front page of the Wall Street Journal this morning, there was an article that there are financiers who are looking at home mortgages for condominiums are starting to put condos on blacklists because of either they have, the condominium building needs a lot of shared deferred maintenance or maintenance that is very high, or that they have insufficient property insurance because climate change is making property insurance incredibly expensive. And so when we're looking at different types of affordable housing, these condos that are, I would qualify as naturally occurring affordable housing, may, it may be more and more difficult for people to buy and sell them because of this financing problem. So as we're talking about different kinds of affordable housing, I just wanted to put that out there. I thought it was pretty alarming. I hope the legislature does something about the insurance problem. It's, it's awful, it needs to be done at a state level. So that's a bad thing. But then a really good thing is that the boys swim team won state. So we have another state championship in Edina and congratulations, gentlemen. That's very awesome.
Thank you. Member Pierce, you had a journey to Washington DC and probably some observations about the National League of Cities meeting?
Well, I actually wasn't going to give any observations tonight, but I, but I will now. So the.
You want to hold them for another meeting?
The one comment that I wanted to make was to just give a shout out to the staff. We did have our retreat this past weekend and I felt like it was very productive. We really had one, one topic. We talked about budget and how to stabilize our budget, changing the trajectory that we're on. And I felt like we had really good, we have a really good plan in place and we had great information from the staff. And so I definitely appreciate all the work that went in to that session. In terms of the National League of Cities Conference, there were, there was a theme that I, that I would say is probably not any different than times before, but housing has a challenge, right? Was, was a theme that was talked about a lot, even in a lot of the general sessions, talking about the challenge that we have as a nation and the fact that each community is different. And so how we're, we go about solving that challenge and articulating that challenge is different depending on your community. But definitely it is a challenge that we have to look at from a federal perspective, state perspective, and a local perspective. I attended two breakouts that were talking about different aspects of affordable housing. And so I personally had done a lot of work on that, I'll say a year ago, was that a year ago, something like that? And was discouraged by my inability to make the progress that I wanted to make. And going to the National League of Cities Conference and hearing the impact and some of the efforts from other cities, kind of reinvigorated, became more reinvigorated?
Reinvigorated.
Say it again?
Reinvigorated.
Reinvigorated. My drive to lean back into that. And so I'm thinking about ways to do that. So if you're listening, residents, I might be, you might be getting an email from me this time versus the other way around. So with that, that's it.
Thank you. I'm Bragno.
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Just a couple of things for me, one might take a little bit more time. Legislative conversation tomorrow about a couple of issues that are important to us. Manager Neal, I'll deal with that. Member Jackson, you raised an interesting issue. I had a person raise this issue with me, and that is, with respect to condominium associations, why aren't they regulated like HOAs? Why aren't HOAs regulated like apartment multifamily rental property owners?
Interesting.
And so his point was that as a multifamily rental property owner, in his case up in St. Cloud primarily, he's come to the conclusion that if HOAs were regulated the same way as he was regulated as a multifamily rental property owner, you wouldn't be seeing these problems about ill-maintained properties, because they'd have to be adequately financed or make them, they'd be required to maintain the property more effectively. And so we might not have situations like we have seen in other cities and ours in one occasion where we've provided some financial assistance to a condominium group. So that was an interesting thought. When Manager Neal and our intern and, you know, went out to, and Member Pierce went out to the National League of Cities, I happened to get invited, as I have before, to the Yale Mayor's College. And Yale pays the, you know, they pay the hotel, they pay the airfare. And there were like 50 or 60 mayors. There were three of us from Minnesota, pretty much across the country, Duluth, me, Burnsville. And Elizabeth Keltz, of course, happens to be the former president of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. So she's usually a natural invitee. That first morning, Monday, Monday afternoon was all mayors, Mayor's College, Yale Mayor's College, they call it. And then on Tuesday, they put the mayors in with 100 CEOs for what they called the CEO Summit. And that was, that was really interesting as well. That first day, I sat next to Bill Padu, Bill Paduto, who was a former mayor of Pittsburgh, who was the mayor when they had that Tree of Life synagogue, terrible event occur out there. And it still has a remarkable impact on him as a, as a person and a neighbor who, you know, lived near, near the synagogue. And he's interesting to talk to about that particular problem. Muriel Bowser, the, gave the opening remarks, the mayor of Washington DC. You know, we think we got challenges around, here around post George Floyd, post COVID, empty offices, hybrid work. They're expecting to lose 40,000 employees at the federal government. Most of them, a lot of them live in Washington DC. And so she's got issues that, that none of us, none of the rest of us have. We got John Kasich, the former governor of Ohio, and was he Speaker of the House too? I can't remember, on video. And he was talking about, in public service, you got to be thinking about being creative, ignore the risks and be creative. You got to be out there on the cutting edge when you're doing local government work. So something to think about. Other folks that, we had a discussion around federalism, economic well-being. We had the, one of the economic advisors to President Trump there, a guy named Steve Moore, who actually is at odds with the president on tariffs on Mexico and Canada. He doesn't, he thinks that's a mistake. He thinks China should be our main concern. Wants to make the Trump, wants to see the Trump tax cuts made permanent. And some other things that he talked about as well. Won't go into detail on that. Ron Klain, who now is with Airbnb, who worked for President Biden, was there by video as well, and talked about the cities being the fundamental building blocks of our economy. And talked about what he viewed as the keys to success, including high quality education and permitting reforms is necessary. And each city needs to have its own strategic plan and, and strategy around making it more And we had, and then we also had Cash Patel, who was the director of the FBI. And he was actually pretty charming. And so it was surprising, although some folks afterwards said, well, you saw the charming side of Cash Patel, there's another side to it. I don't know about that side. And just, you know, it was just a fascinating situation. So when we got to the next day in the CEO Summit, we were lined up in rows and Richard Blumenthal was there, right off the bat, the senator from Connecticut, and had his remarks. Talked about Ukraine a little bit. Kevin Rudd, the former prime minister of Australia and the former U.S. ambassador from Australia, gave his views on China. He's a China expert and a China scholar. Michael Dell from Dell Computing, and he was in the row in front of me, just by coincidence. And the mayor of Rochester Hills, Michigan, was sitting next to me. He was looking at his telephone and he said, pokes me in the ribs, he says, Jim, I think there's three billionaires sitting in front of us here. Michael Dell, of course, one of them. And talked about the U.S.-China relationship and how we need to build on this domestic semiconductor capability, that that was critical to what we needed to be doing. capability, that that was critical to what we needed to be doing. And then a lot of comments by a lot of other CEOs as well, but I would say that CEO optimism has kind of fallen off the cliff for 2025, there was a survey done by Jeff Sonnenfeld, who runs it from the Yale School of Management, runs these sessions for both the mayors and the CEOs and it was, you know, we're heading in the wrong direction, in the opinion, these CEOs and most of them think we're heading for a recession, what's happening on a federal level is inflationary and now Europe is kind of reassessing everything, what they need to be doing in terms of taking care of themselves militarily, they've, they've relied on us in the past to kind of backstop them and on and on the comments went that were very interesting to listen to. So that was, I mean, that's kind of in a nutshell, I've got a lot more notes than that, but I didn't want to delay the end of this meeting, but it was a really great experience again in being involved and, in hearing the opinions of some of these CEOs that really aligned with the opinions of mayors around the country as well about concern over the uncertainty and the chaos that seems to be emanating at our federal level right now. So that's it for me and did that prompt anybody else to think about anything they wanted to talk about?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
But we talked briefly, very briefly on Saturday about industrial development bonds and that's where in the olden days, cities would provide taxes and financing for economic development and then it would be paid off by revenues from the new building that were new business that was brought in and in 1986, those were made not tax exempt anymore, but when you mentioned about the economic, cities that's economic building blocks, but then also the Trump tax law, one of the things they're talking about is removing tax exemption for municipal bonds and if that were to happen, we will have to have a pretty robust conversation about how bonding and IDBs, industrial development bonds work, so let's hope we don't lose that tax exemption.
Yeah, that's a good observation, that's one of the top issues, I think, for the National League of Cities and the US Conference of Mayors is trying to make sure that we maintain that tax exempt bond status. All right, good, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Jackson moves, Member Pierce seconds, so we adjourn the meeting of the Edina City Council Tuesday, March 18, 2025. Any further discussion, those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried, we stand adjourned.